There is a level, a threshold of, I want to say hierarchy, right? For that approval to happen. So I would urge you, if you have questions over that, to certainly consult with county council before making any, you know, final determinations, but just to share what my understanding of how that cannabis permit process works. As many of you know, I'm the primary owner of Flora. We have over 200 cannabis clients, so I'm very familiar with the process. And I just wanted to share that with you to assist in this analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're there, Ms. Wright, I just wanted to say, last month, we had a difference of opinion of whether or not cultivation and canopy were in the original ordinance. And I went home and looked it up, and you were correct, and I was wrong. So I apologize.
Oh, no worries. You know, there's always differences of opinion. It never gets personal. That's what I always like to say, right?
And I'm always learning. So, but thank you. I just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that.
Do we have any other comments in the room?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. Like to welcome our new Commissioner as well and to the crucible, I suppose. I think, you know, I understand why your predecessor, Commissioner Sharp, felt like some of the things going on with his own business was a distraction and opted to leave his seat. I appreciate District Two working fast to give us a complete commission once again. There was a lot of talk that, oh, well, maybe we should go after Sharp Electric or something, the way that cannabis businesses get shut down. Sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander. I think this is a good opportunity to really recognize that, in fact, sauce for the gander is sauce for the goose. The object of regulation and the kinds of things that we wrestle with in this room is compliance. This is not a court, and this is not criminal law. Our ideal goal is that we get these behaviors within the rules, because these small businesses, we are very lucky to have them here, whatever they are, they employ people, those people spend money here, they have families here. That's what we're after. And I appreciate the work the Commission does to walk the line in there between what's right for the community in both senses, neighbors and people with projects for every term that project covers, be it a development or a commercial operation. So anyway, welcome. Thank you all for being here and an early welcome to our incoming Commissioner, excuse me, Chair. And I look forward to what we can do this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the room? Any other public comment on Zoom? Okay. Then at this point, we will close public comments and move on to the regular calendar. Item one is rotation of Chair. Staff, do you have any? Report, guidance? Nope. Okay. Okay, so we will figure this out then. So I just wanted to point out that in the past, there was a rotation schedule for Chair, and it was Districts One, Five, Three, Two, and then Four. When we amended the bylaws last year, we took out that rotation and have a simple election for Chair and Vice Chair. So that gives us a little bit more flexibility. So I have a question for my fellow Commissioners. Would you prefer to have a slate nominated? Or would you prefer to have election for Chair and then Vice Chair?
What nomination?
Do we want to just do both of them together, Chair and Vice Chair? Or do we want to do them individually?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said. But okay, yeah. I don't care.
All right.
I think it's probably easier to just go one at a time.
Okay. All right. So then I would entertain a nomination for Chair.
Well, I nominate Mr. Harret right there for Chair.
Our current Vice Chair.
Our current Vice Chair for Chair, yes.
Okay.
Heaton, I said Harret. I apologize, Heaton.
Okay. So do we have any other nominations for Chair? I think we can just vote then. I'm getting the nod, yes. Okay, all those in favor?
Do you need a second for the motion?
It's not really a motion so much as a nomination.
I don't think we need a second. I think it's just more of you deciding who you want to take the position.
Okay, so then all those in favor of Todd Heaton as the Chair for 2024 for the Planning Commission, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Do I have to recuse myself on that? Oh.
Like I said.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was asking staff, because essentially the bylaws are silent on this procedure. So if we're winging it, that's why we're winging it. Okay, so then a nomination for Vice Chair.
I would nominate Rory. He's the second longest-serving Commissioner. Don't you speak into the? I said, I would recommend, I would nominate Commissioner Barrett, since he's the second-longest sitting Commissioner.
Okay, and he's not here. Okay, any other nominations for Vice Chair? All those in favor of Commissioner Barrett for Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So our Chair will be Todd Heaton. Our Vice Chair will be Rory Barrett. And so how would you like us to? Would you like us to move? Do we know where we're supposed to move to?
You can move where you feel comfortable. So you might just swap places with Todd.
Todd. That way, I can give him the elbow. Him card.
My garbage.
Congratulations. Do I owe each player $50?
No, you don't.
Okay. So I have a purple sticky that has the order for the Brown Act in terms of agenda items, staff presentation, applicant, agent present, technical clarifying questions. So I am bequeathing this to Todd.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Much appreciated, Ms. Carroll.
Oh, well, thank you, ma'am. Well, with item one being continued or being completed, we'll continue on to item number two with the minutes of the approving minutes of the January 11, 2024 meeting.
I would move that we approve the January 11, 2024 meeting minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, beautiful. Beautiful.
We'll continue on to item number three. Amendment to Title 15.25, limited-density rural dwelling, the DV-23-03. District Five Supervisor Dan Frazier is requesting an ordinance amendment to Trinity County Code Section 15.25.030 that would exempt parcels from the minimum parcel acreage requirement if located outside the boundaries of a community service district, which provides sewer and water location countywide. Planners, Mr. Mitchell Wexler and Ms. Bella Hedke.
Good evening, Commissioners. The initial ordinance was passed by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors on April 28 and October 18, 2022, respectively. This proposed ordinance was requested by Supervisor of District Five, Dan Frazier, to remove the required minimum acreage for parcels without any service or without being within the borders of a CSD that provides water or sewer service. This proposed amendment was requested with the intent of increasing the number of parcels that would be able to have a limited-density rural dwelling within the post-Mountain Trinity Pines area. On, I mean, after the meeting on November 9, the Planning Division decided that it would, that the best next action would be to take the item and return it back to the Planning Division in order to run it through for comments. After running it through for comments with all of the relevant safety agencies, we did receive information back from them regarding concerns about fire safety and whether or not the buildings would be up to the building code. These codes specifically being Public Resources Code 4290, 4291, and the California Building Code, Chapter 7A. As written in the staff report, staff has confirmed the structures must meet these aforementioned requirements. And for this reason, staff added language to the proposed amendment that indicates as such. Due to the regulatory constrict, or due to the regulatory restrictions communicated by CalFire and the County Environmental Health Division, staff recommends reducing the required acreage, instead of nothing, to one acre for a minimum. There are three alternatives that can be chosen by the Commission. These include having the Planning Division continue this item for more information, recommending an alternative request of modifications to be made to the Board of Supervisors, or the rejection of this overall, of the requested modifications overall. Planning staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a motion that recommends the draft ordinance amendment, or DEV-23-03, to Trinity County Code 15.25.030, as attached to the staff report, to the Board of Supervisors, that includes, at a minimum, a specific acreage limit, at least one acre, the Commission would recommend for the exemption, given the discussion in this staff report and public comment. And if the Commission wishes to use a different boundary type other than CSDs that provide sewer or water to qualify a parcel for exemption, I mean, to explicitly state this in the motion and state any other changes to the draft ordinance amendment the Commission and the Planning Commission would like the Board to hear.
Okay. Well.
Staff is here to answer any questions. And Cody Smith, the Senior Building Inspector, is online as well.
Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I have quite a few, but would somebody else like to go first? Yeah, so this is Commissioner Fall, for those of you on Zoom who aren't watching. Just a few questions. So could you please clarify why it's changed from water and sewer to water or sewer? That was a little confusing to me.
Understandable. The main reason it was changed to water or sewer is because Weaverville has a CSD that provides one service and a sanitary district that provides the other. This would put Weaverville within the areas to be considered for these limited-density rural dwellings, when the target is not for it to be a focus of Weaverville or any other relatively majorly developed areas within the county for the most part.
So, but if someone in Weaverville gets water and sewer, they would be excluded from this option. But if someone in Weaverville only gets, let's say, water, they would still have this option, even though they're within a CSD?
This is a, so that the CSD boundary was, I propose that because I want staff and the public to have a recognizable boundary to verify whether they would qualify for this exemption. And Weaverville threw a curveball into that idea. I understand what you're getting at. So if you're, if you have a parcel that is within the water district and the sewer district, I guess you, no, I mean, you're inside one or the other. That's what's happening here. So if you're within the sewer district, then you wouldn't qualify. If you're within the water district, then you wouldn't qualify, unless you're already at five acres.
Well, how does this affect Hayfork? Because Hayfork, where they have water, the CSD, or there's a, you know, CSD that provides water, right?
And sewer.
Okay. Something, so District One, East Branch Road, they have water, but no sewer. So they would.
So if they're in the water district and they're under five acres, they would not qualify. That's how I understood it.
Okay. They would not qualify if they have water or sewer.
Unless their five acres are larger, then they would still qualify.
Right.
They just wouldn't qualify for this special proposed exemption.
That is unless we lower the, the limited, the number down.
The one acre.
Down.
If that were to be lowered, then the number would be adjusted for it to be.
So we're not lowering the five-acre minimum for all parcels. We're adding an exemption that would allow for parcels under five acres in a special circumstance, in this case, outside of a boundary.
Okay.
Then they would apply.
Well, that's the current proposal, right? And so then we'll have the opportunity to discuss whether we agree with those boundaries or not.
Right.
Can I get a point of order, since I'm new, so that I'm understanding? So right now, are we just asking questions for staff? Or are we able to discuss amongst ourselves right now?
We're asking questions for staff right now.
Thank you.
We have to have a motion on the floor before we have discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Which we tend to just chat in any way, but, oh, okay. Let's see, so another question, so I'm, the Building Department provided comments, and I'm wondering if the language that is proposed, that they comply with Chapter 7A and PRC Codes 4290, 4291, does that address the Building Department concerns, the specific language that they wanted to have included? Maybe Cody can answer.
I believe so, but Cody's just raised his hand.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Cody Smith, Senior Building Inspector. So those were some of the questions that I had in the beginning of this when it started, was the existing one, does it encompass those concerns that had been brought up? And based on conversations that I have had with staff, the understanding is that the current language that's within the limited-density rural owner-builder does not actually say that you basically don't have to adhere to those standards. So as the original limited-density owner-builder ordinance stands, it includes those anyhow. So this would be, most of the comments that I made, that I was a little concerned about, was more so getting a little deeper into it. And the reason for that is because when you get into those smaller parcels, you run into a chance where you've got more parcels that could potentially be closer, therefore making more housing kind of closer and not really addressing some of the issues like fire blocking, draft stopping, things of those natures that the original ordinance didn't encompass. So in my comments that I made, one of the recommendations that I made was that we adhere to Section R302 of the California Residential Building Code. The reason that I specifically chose that was because when we're talking about these structures, I think our main focus is that we're speaking about residential dwellings. And as such, I think that we should look at those fire-resistant construction codes in the residential aspect, rather than the full Chapter 7 of the Building Code. Now, Chapter 7A is actually addressing most of the same things that the WUII standards address with the exterior requirements, as in the roof requirements for the Class A roof, which with a metal building, you're already, or metal roof, you're already meeting that. And then you're also addressing the tempered windows, the Class A-approved siding, and things of that nature that really helps with that outside envelope of that structure.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the addition of the requirement that they meet the Chapter 7A addresses most of your concerns, with the exception of the R302 from the California Residential Building Code?
That is correct, because basically what that's doing is adding another layer that we can address some of the concerns with the construction in the way of how that fire will spread. Without having those draft stops, without having that fire blocking, you're really opening yourself up where if a fire does start, without having those concealed spaces blocked off, it's really going to allow that fire to spread. And I believe if there's anyone there with the fire department, they could probably speak on that as well.
Okay, thanks, Cody.
Yep.
See, I have two other quick questions, if I might. Okay. I was curious why storage buildings were listed in the type of permits? I mean, this is intended for family residences. So why are, are we permitting storage buildings to be used as family residences?
So that was, that language was included in the ordinance that was originally passed in 2022. I was just highlighting it to make it clear in our discussion with this.
Which language?
The pertinent structures.
Oh, those are pertinent structures, okay.
And Cody raised his hand, looking like he may want to chime in too.
I was basically just going to echo that same thing, Bella, is that the way they had it listed was the pertinent structures. And then if you look at the definition of that, it's including that and basically saying if it is accessory to the residence.
Okay. So we're just not, we're not kind of building, we're not using storage buildings as homes.
That is correct.
Perfect, okay. Last question. So there were, if we lowered it to one acre, then there's 7,759 parcels that potentially could take advantage of this ordinance. Information that I have from the Planning Department is that there's 12,501 addressed parcels, just under 17,000 total parcels in the county. But a lot of those are just like ride away or for a service or something. So essentially, you're saying 62% of the addressed parcels would be eligible to have this alternate building standard? Do you not, did you consider that when you were looking at cumulative impacts? Or, you know, whether that level of essentially change in building requirements for those 62% of the parcels has a significant impact?
So there was no cumulative impact analysis for this, because we considered it to be a not project under CEQA, or no project. Then moreover, we had documentation for exemptions as well. So there wouldn't be a requirement for cumulative impact analysis on this.
But should it have been a cumulative impact analysis if it's 62% of the potential parcels in the county?
I personally don't see the necessity for this for an ordinance, especially for building permits, which are ministerial in nature.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
And it doesn't go outside of the allowed uses of a zone. So the zoning district itself would have had an evaluation for CEQA when that was created.
That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to build off of one of Commissioner Fall's questions. So on to the storage buildings. It's not to say, or I want to clarify that this permit structure could be used in the future, though, to convert those storage buildings into additional dwelling units or to have them as junior additional dwelling units in the future? Is that possible or not under this permit structure?
Cody, he can dig a crack at that.
So that is correct. They could do that. So essentially, we actually do that as it is right now. Any storage building could be converted to a legal residence as long as it meets the requirements. And the same, I could say, would be available for these limited-density rural owner-builder storage structures as well.
Okay. And following up on that, our current ordinances allow for owner-builder in another ordinance? Or just under this one for JDUs and ADUs?
Owner-builders can happen essentially by anyone. We, you know, we essentially have contractors that will sometimes call in and pull the permits, but believe it or not, we actually have a lot of owner-builder projects, and that's allowed.
Okay, thank you. So relevant to my district, I was able to have a couple of conversations with our local community service districts, as well as some of our other local districts. One of the things that I would really like to see and know before being able to have a better structured conversation about this is how many parcels in District Two would be impacted by this change if it were lowered to one acre or more, both inside and outside of the community service districts as part of my evaluation? So I'm interested if staff would be able to provide that in the future?
The RTIS layers we do have would enable us to figure that information out overall. So that is a possibility.
Okay. I'd also like to see a distribution across the whole entire county and some acreage totals as well.
Say that again?
To see visually, based on some of the different breakouts that they've had for the five-acre acres plus, where the ordinance is currently allowed, then where they propose the three-acre plus, where that barrier would be for the three to five-acre parcels. And then they also propose two and a half, so looking at two and a half-acre break, and then all the way down to the one-acre break. There has been minimal mention of District Two in the briefing packet, and so I just don't feel that there's enough information for me to really have good information for District Two on this topic.
If I may?
Yes.
So you could, if that is a consensus of the Commission, we would need you to include that in your motion, whether it be to continue, or we could figure that out before it goes to the Board, because it is a direction of staff to use department funds to acquire more information for you. So we'd need a majority vote.
Okay. One of my additional questions related to the information within the packet, relevant most likely to you, Cody, is how many of the current applicants to use our limited-density rural dwelling ordinance have been to come into compliance under the three-year allowance period for that? My understanding from talking with previous Commissioners is that that was one of the key points, was to bring more people into compliance. And so I would just like to know how many people have utilized that to date?
At this time, we have not actually had any applicants come in to essentially permit those illegal, unpermitted structures. What we have had is we've had previous applicants that pulled permits for a normal 2022 Building Code residence that have essentially asked if they could switch over to this ordinance. That's the closest we've gotten to that.
And do we know what other limiting factors are playing into the underutilization of coming into compliance under that three-year allowance?
Honestly, I'm not really sure on that one. We've had many conversations with folks. I know that I can think of one off the top of my head that was one that had initially gotten a violation for their residence and wanted to come in under the ordinance, but they unfortunately did not meet that five-acre minimum.
Okay. And I just want to thank Mitchell and Bella with this week, with being voted in last week. Okay, and I just want to thank Mitchell and Bella with this week with being voted in last week. I'm trying to do a lot of catch up and learning. So I was able to meet with them earlier this week and get some of my questions answered. So thank you guys for that. And I believe that we, I was able to hear from them that there's only been one interested party, which that might be the one that you just mentioned, interested in looking at anything less than five acres. Have you had any other interested parties come forward who would like to see this lowered to less than five?
We have not, and she was the only one.
Cody put in his comment that there was others. If you would like to speak on that, you can.
My apologies.
Yeah, we have actually had others, but it, I mean, honestly, it's probably about less than five. We have not really had a lot. And what's interesting about this limited density rural owner builder ordinance is that most of the applications that we have received, when we look at the plans, they actually meet most of our building codes. What it looks like to me that people really want to kind of get by, if you will, is the fire sprinklers and the energy requirements. Those are the two things that I see the most that has been the big one for getting people in is they really want to try to get out of that one.
Absolutely.
And do we have any estimate based off of the three acre plus, the two and a half acre plus, or the one acre plus as to how many homes are currently out of compliance that would be eligible to then come into compliance? If we lowered the acreage minimum?
That was not, we do not have numbers for that.
Okay.
I have a question on that. The three acre or the three-year cutoff time of the, from a non-compliant home to, was that officially three years or was it, did they make that to where it was longer than that?
Three years.
Was it three years?
Cody, would you like to speak on that? I can pull up the ordinance right now.
Yeah, I believe it was three years is that they wanted to have under there. And I also believe that there was a two-year requirement in terms of selling it or renting it and things of that nature.
Correct. I remembered that one, but I wasn't sure if there was the, if it was longer than three years or what. So thank you for the clarification on that.
So if we were able to make a change, are we able to look at installing an additional three years pertinent to anybody who would like to see between under the five acres to whatever our minimum balance would be? To allow for those people who previously couldn't come into compliance to come into compliance?
That's up to the commission.
Yeah, we can, we can change that.
Yeah. Do we have any other?
Cody, did you have anything? Sorry.
I was just going to mention that I would actually support that motion as well. I think at the end of the day, anybody that we can bring into compliance is a huge win, not only for our applicants, but as well as us as our public servants. So I really would support that in terms of adding that additional three years for anyone underneath that acreage minimum.
Yeah, it's, it's Section 1525.050, existing structures shall be eligible for permits under this chapter without penalty for a period of three years after adoption of this ordinance. So yeah, we could, we could change that or we could change it to amendment of the ordinance. And it would be three years starting now.
Is there a cap to how many of the styled structure may be built on any single parcel?
No.
They'd have to comply with max lot coverage for the zoning district.
Okay. So within the original ordinance, it mentioned that the county would provide technical assistance and guidance to improve home repairs and support compliance. Have we hosted those events?
Not that I'm aware of. That's from the housing element. And it says, I think it says we would support them. I don't know if. Yeah.
Someone just clarified to me how it's annotated in the sale of a property that these were built under this ordinance rather than traditional building styles?
I'm going to lean on Cody and look it up because it's in the, I think it's in like the deed section.
The requirement is, is basically that once we do the final, where we would do the certificate of occupancy, we also would have something that would be recorded on the deed that would basically spell out that this is a residence that has been built under this ordinance. And that way, any future buyers or anyone like that will be made aware once they basically look into those details of that property.
That's Section 1525.060 recording.
Thank you. I think those are my questions for now.
Commissioner Don, you have any questions?
Not anymore. You did a great job.
Y'all did a great job. Do we got any public comment in the room? Thank you, staff.
Hi, I was going to say Madam Chair, but it's not Madam Chair anymore. It's Mr. Chair and Commission. I have a piece of property that does this. And I, I think I would love to see as many people have this opportunity to build the home that they want. I think it's going to add revenue to the county. I think most people that you talk to that are going to build homes like this aren't looking at a lean to. They're looking at homes that they want to live in. And I understand your concerns about that. But I'd like to see this, this commission take it down as far as we can to zero. I would like to see that because other other counties have tried it. They've done it. I think it can be done. We're talking about rural people with different needs out there. And there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people that haven't applied for this because they don't know about it. So I think there's a lot of education that needs to be had too for people. They don't, they don't know this exists. There's whole, there's whole communities that don't know that this opportunity exists for them. And so I think, I think it, they'd have a lot more applications for this if we could get the word out that, that this is something that's possible for them. But I do believe it's your right to build what you'd like to do on your own property. You buy a property for a lot of money. We pay taxes on that property. And this has been going on since 2022 now, trying to get this done. And meanwhile, people can't build their homes. Okay, they've got small acreage. They don't want to spend, I can tell you from experience that it's $45,000 almost. If you think about all of the costs that you need to do with the architect, the engineers, right? And you have somebody, and you don't have a family member that can build that house. So now you're up to what $150,000 before you even, right? Before you get it done. So I'd like to see this available to as many people as possible. We have a housing shortage. And like I said, most people aren't like, like, like me. This house isn't going to be a shack. This is going to be a beautiful home. I've, I've lived in a lot of big homes. I don't want a big home. I want a small home now. And so I think I'm in the same boat as a lot of people. And we need to make this available for everybody. I really, I really believe that. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Burnfield. Any other comments in the room?
Chris Williams, Weaverville. I think this is an incredible opportunity. We talk a lot about affordable housing opportunities in our community and the lack of them. And I think this presents a great opportunity. This is just an exemption. So this just helps out more folks who may have the know-how to build a house. But I know from some of my clients, you know, some of these like fire, what do you call it, sprinklers that they have to have in their very rural home that, you know, is surrounded by their fire protection water tanks, et cetera, you know, is prohibitively expensive. And so maybe it's the kick of watching a lot of homesteading TV shows I've been watching lately. But I think this is such a great opportunity to open up this opportunity to more people in our county. And especially with just the housing markets and our economy being pretty low right now. I say anything that can give us a little bit of a boost, we should do. Thank you.
Williams? Any other comments in the room?
Now we're on to Chair Heaton. Thank you very much. And Commissioners, just a few comments. One of the things that for District Two that you might note is the zoning that's available for this type of housing. Much of what I see in this area wouldn't qualify because it doesn't fit the zoning type with rural residential kind of being the only residential. So I don't think that that changes in this exemption. So just a comment on that, CSDs. I do have a bit of a concern of using them in the exemption in that, for example, I live in the Lewiston Community Service District, but I receive it and it supplies water and sewer, but I receive no water and sewer from them. So we're excluding the people who don't receive water and sewer, even though they're in a community service district. And I'm not sure what other, how the other CSDs are, but Lewiston is clearly like that. It only serves a very small part of the community service district. And then the rest of the services we receive are just the fire protection. So something just to note in using the CSDs for this exemption. I would be curious to know, and I could probably look it up, but maybe someone could tell us tonight, is when did that three-year start date begin? I'm not sure, you know, when that finally passed and it, if you know, then maybe perhaps someone can address that for the public. I think Julia commented on the educational element and how much promotion maybe perhaps we should be doing more of, whether it's Instagram, Facebook, or you know, getting, I don't know, because some of the areas, they're very rural, they might not have access to the social media. But how can we better inform people on the availability of this if it's not really being well utilized? I think the additional three years is really important, but again, it's kind of from where does that, where does that number take us? Mentioning just on the cannabis front, because that's, you know, my occupation to help cannabis farmers primarily, is this will definitely benefit a large segment of the cannabis community that is in the Trinity Pines area. Their CSD does not provide water and sewer, just fire protection. Many of the parcels there are under the 2.5. So I think going down to the, the one acre is important for that particular area. There's always been a concern of blight and the lack of infrastructure that was provided, even though a subdivision was created there by the county without the supporting infrastructure. So it's created a lot of issues and this could assist them in actually being able to meet the dwelling requirement and come into the cannabis program. And we can get them out of the unregulated space as well. This should help with that additionally. So just some of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Adrian Keyes and Hayfork, thank you, Chair and a new Commissioner. Good to see her. Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the Water Works Number One, that actually a large portion of the people in the Water Works Number One get water, but do not have sewer. So if it's an either or sort of thing, I think that's a real important consideration. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Keys.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. I like the idea of reducing this to one acre, particularly when I think about Trinity Pines. I think that's really a good location to implement this. I do have some confidence in the zoning that another commenter pointed out, leaving the residential, the R1, excuse me, R1, R2, and R3, RR is included in, in this ordinance, but the straight residential ones are not. I think that's good for Weaverville probably. And I don't know where else our residential zoning is. I think pretty much our main population centers, Lewiston, Weaverville, Hayfork, and Trinity Center have that. But that might be a clever place to look. Although I imagine staff has thought of that too. So if the CSD definition is what they came up with, that probably is the one that fits this best. So on another note, I, I believe when this was passed at the board, that three-year timeline, and again, I don't have this in front of me, but because after the board passed it, it still had to be approved by various agencies at the state, and Cody maybe can speak to this. It wasn't implemented 30 days after the second reading, like most ordinances. It had to actually come back from the state. So I believe the three-year trigger was something along the lines of when it became effective or when the application was appropriate. So there is still some time in that three-year. And I do think that maybe some outreach would be appropriate to help people know that this is there. Some of us who are intimately involved in this know it's here, but it would be a good idea. And this maybe is an occasion that we could do that. If we lowered the acreage requirement, we could have some outreach around that to say, hey, this is here. This is an availability. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco.
Good evening, Commissioners. Pasha Loire from Hayfork. And I would like to see the acreage requirements drop down to as minimum as possible. There's a lot of families, a lot in my community, especially up in the Trinity Pine, is affecting this. And if, imagine if you drop down the acreage requirements, a lot of the families up in Trinity Pine will have access to a proper housing. And more and more family will move into the area and that will strive for our, our economic growth that will contribute back to the Trinity County. So I greatly appreciate it if you would take that into considerations. I believe about like 85% of the landowner up in Trinity Pines are less than two acres. So to have that minimum requirement dropped down as low as possible, that will have, it would give our, our community the opportunity to have a better housing what they're currently having at the moment right now. Besides that, anyway, the, once we have a proper housing in our land, then people will start moving in permanently and then getting the cannabis programs, become more structured and stabilized. And then people, more and more people is going to be able to sustain the living up in the Trinity Pines. And that's going to be a benefit for the community at large and can contribute back to the Trinity County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners. I also wanted to speak in support of reducing the acreage minimum to whatever everybody can decide is, is safe and, you know, beneficial. I feel throughout the process of this ordinance, prior to amendment, it had public support from all stripes of life. You know, definitely agency and government concerns, but I don't remember hearing one person from the public really having any opposition to this in its original ordinance going to the Board of Supervisors. Before moving to Trinity County, I was a general contractor in Oregon that has rolled out similar programs to this. I never saw it, never personally was involved in building it in lower lot sizes with higher density. But on the larger lot, parcels had very, or none that I can think of, negative impact after, you know, several years or decades of, of having been implemented. I would encourage, you know, as much inclusion as possible while taking into consideration all of the comments that were put in by, you know, a lot of people that I respect their opinion from volunteer fire chiefs to building department. Our building department has been great to work with over the years prior to ordinances like this, in my experience anyway. And I hope by allowing them to work with more people under this ordinance, they'll, they'll be able to better serve what people are wanting in, in this county, which with passing of Senate Bill Nine allows for, you know, higher density housing on smaller lot sizes. The one acre cap seems The one acre cap seems to be a staff recommendation as well as concerns from a lot of agencies that have to address the needs of the public with housing. And I think that's probably a good spot to kind of meet in the middle, but I would encourage you to think outside the box and explore other options. Because, you know, obviously our current housing situation in, in California is, is not sufficient and going very well. So I think thinking outside the box of general building code could really go a long ways for a county such as this. So I, I would encourage you to, you know, take staff's recommendation and, you know, consider other options beyond that as well. If, if it can still be sufficient to, to those parties that have concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments in the room?
Hi, Steve Lyon, Junction City. There's a housing crisis in California. I think as interest rates have risen, a lot of people are finding that it's cheaper to stay in their homes with low interest rates. Their, you know, loans they got five, 10, 15, 20 years ago, looking at new housing is really pushing a lot of people out of the market right now. Obviously, sales are down everywhere. I think everybody's pretty aware that there's a housing crisis in California. That's what triggered SB nine and the ADU requirements. So I support anything that opens up opportunities for people to stay on their property, build. You have growing families who are, or buying new is just unaffordable right now. So being able to expand a bedroom at a reasonable cost, anything we can do to lower those costs. New construction right now is around $300 a square foot. So you're lucky if you can get under 300, especially in the more rural areas where all the materials have to come farther and are usually more expensive. So getting under 300 square foot for new construction is challenging, especially if you want to go with higher-end finishes, you quickly get up into the 350, 375 range. So a 12 by 16 bedroom or addition, just under 200 square feet, runs you about $60,000, right? $60,000 to build a bedroom addition. So anything we can do to reduce those costs, I think is beneficial for the community. I mean, just the trickle effect ripples or the ripple effect keeps rippling out. We, we have a lot of logging in our area. We used to have a lot more logging. We have a mill. So, you know, more lumber sales, more construction sales, anything we can do reasonably safely to make housing and building more affordable, I'm definitely for. I think staff recommendations are reasonable, so I support them and I encourage you to do as well.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments in the room, please?
Evening Commissioners. Greg Tavallaro, Battalion Chief with CAL FIRE SSS Trinity Unit. And I know I'm here in a uniform as a government employee, but I'm guilty of my own property as well. Just to address some, a lot of codes that were thrown around and just trying to address that stuff a little bit. And the one acre minimum that we kind of got in there. So Public Resource Code 4290, it addresses access requirements into a residence. Making sure a driveway is wide enough, it's not too steep. So basically if somebody calls 911 or they have a fire, that we can get emergency vehicles into the house. So that's what 4290 is, and 4291 is the vegetation clearance requirements around the place. And then 7A is the home hardening stuff. So basically to have, make a home more resilient, more survivable in the case of a fire. So I think everyone's pretty much aware that most fires are caused by us. They're caused by people, caused by our construction in the wildland, caused by mechanical failures, but it's all because of people. There are very, very few fires that have just started by lightning. We've had a couple of big ones, but most fires are started by people. And the one acre for the 4290 comes in because written in Public Resource Code 4290, it is not in effect on acres, on acreages less than one. Because in a normal time and place, that would have gone to a subdivision review committee and the subdivision would have had to build in their plans for their roads and stuff like that. So Trinity Pines being a perfect example, Trinity Pines roads are terrible. And getting emergency equipment in and people out, if it gets more populated densely, it could be a big issue on that. And I'm up for any questions you guys have.
Do you all have any questions? Ms. Carroll?
I don't. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Any comments on Zoom? What's that? Okay. Well, we'll close. Public comment, and do we have a motion?
I, I do have a motion. I've been scribbling, you know. So I move that the Planning Commission recommend the draft ordinance amendment DEV 230, I think that's a type O3, O2, O3, O3, to the Trinity County Code 1525.030 with a one acre minimum parcel size. And that section 1525.040X, fire safety requirements be added stating, "All new structures shall comply with California Building Code 7A, PRC 4290 and 4291, California Residential Building Code 302, and the Trinity County Fire Safe Ordinance TCC 8.30. For the purposes of this chapter, residential fire sprinklers shall not be required in limited-density rural dwellings." And amend 15.2505, existing structures to state for a period of five years after adoption. And that last, that's negotiable, that last, trying to fix that. But anyway, if anyone's interested in seconding for discussion, that's my motion.
I second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, that sounds good.
Mr. Chair?
What's that? Do we have any discussions?
Yeah, so as many of you know, our ordinance is, was based largely on the Mendocino, limited-density rural development ordinance. And so I went back and looked at that. Since this ordinance was adopted, I, I just felt that there was a lot of questions and confusion whether or not 4290, 4291, Chapter 7A, applied. So I'm glad to see that they've attempted to clarify that. I just thought it was a little clumsy that it was kind of tacked on to the, the technical code. So I was doing what they do in the Mendocino ordinance, which is they have a separate list. You know, we have all the technical codes. There's sanitation, plumbing, water supply, septic systems. They have all that. And then they also just list out fire safety requirements. And in their fire safety requirements, they have Chapter 7A, you know, and all that good stuff, like, like we were proposing. And they also say, "For the purposes of this chapter, residential fire sprinklers shall not be required in limited-density rural dwellings." And I will say at the fire chiefs meeting, when we were discussing the letter that was sent, we took out the recommendation that sprinklers be included because nobody likes the sprinklers if you're off the grid and all that. They're just hard to do. So, but otherwise they were supportive of the other fire safety requirements. So that's why I've kind of worded it the way I did. It's, it's just moving stuff around compared to the staff recommendation. It's adding that the sprinklers aren't, would not be required. And then, like I said, I'm up for whatever you guys would rather do in terms of extending the time period that people could come into compliance, if you have better language. But anyway, that's my rationale behind the, the motion.
Okay, I have a question on that. I was like, what exactly, when you say the 7A? It was like, I'm, I'm not seeing it right at the moment, but it's like, so what exactly falls under the 7A?
That's the home hardening stuff. So you have to have the exterior fireproof siding. You know, it doesn't have to be hardy board, but it has to meet a certain.
Standard.
Standard.
Okay. And does that include like the softening vents and stuff of that nature as well?
Some of it, yeah.
And the fire blocking in the walls?
Does 7A still allow for alternate constructives such as Cobb or container homes?
I, I understand that it does, yeah.
Which one is the 4290?
Yeah, maybe. Mr. Tavallaro can definitely answer.
Access requirements. Okay. 4291 is the vegetation. And that's the 100-foot clearance? Is that what it?
And, and staff, in their, in the staff recommendation, they have the language that they've proposed to add, which is California Building Code, Chapter 7A, 4290, 4291, and Fire Safe, Trinity County Fire Safe Ordinance. I just pulled that out and put it in a separate section. It's the same language.
Okay, I'm following you.
Yeah. I just, it's just been a lot of confusion as far as how the fire safe stuff applies. And so it just seemed like it made sense to follow Mendocino and have a whole separate, you know, language for fire safety requirements.
Correct.
Under your motion, are you adhering to making sure that the boundaries are the community service districts for sewer or water? Or in that motion, are you removing those boundaries? I'm following the staff recommendation. So their language that they have, which is sewer or water. I'm interested in discussing removing that boundary as a limitation factor. Primarily when we're looking at some of our community service districts and also looking at our natural resources, which is my background. I do have concerns over looking at implementing this, such as in the Pope's Mountain area, where we are going to have higher density and have potential for well and sewer contamination over time.
Can I ask you a question? Did you say Pope Mountain?
Post Mountain.
Oh, Post Mountain, okay.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I don't know where Pope Mountain is.
And so I am interested to allowing any house or removing that requirement that they have to be outside of a community service district to allow the potential that units and parcels within community service districts could allow for use within existing natural resources and not exploit additional natural resources within the area.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you would want to see if you're within a CSD and you have water and sewer or sewer, that you would still be able to take advantage of this alternate building code?
Yes.
But you would have to have more than one acre. And you'd have to have the appropriate zoning.
Correct.
Well, yes, that's what I'm trying to figure out is how many parcels then you're picking up? Because, you know, you wouldn't be, like, R1, R2, R3 wouldn't qualify in a, in, you know, which is a lot of what you see within a CSD.
Which is why I asked for some mapping. I think that would help us answer some of these questions.
That would certainly make it easier for staff.
Well, Ms. Bella, do you have a comment on that? It looked like you were about to say something.
Thank you, Todd. I was just looking up parcel bureau while I was sitting here, and it does look like there's a lot of RR parcels in the, like, bordering possibly the CSD. I don't have capabilities of those layers on my phone, but there is RR potentially, yeah, available for this.
I think there's also one of the public comments that was brought up earlier as that they could live within a community service district that provides water or sewer, but they do not receive sewer or water. And so I'm not sold on that boundary by that point either.
Another factor would be that you're not going to have parcels that size and that many, like she said, rural, they're going to be outskirts. They're going to be where you would apply for a variance or have a reasonable question on that anyway. So I don't know if it's mute or not, but it, I wouldn't want to be precluded if that's what I wanted to do. And I had the, the proper size acreage and the proper zoning, but I was restricted because I had water and sewer that I paid for as opposed to installing myself.
And I was able to talk to Weaverville Community Service District today. They expressed that they would have capacity. I did have a call into the sewer district. They were unable to give me a call back due to the short timing. But I think that's a question that we might want to ask as well, is if their current infrastructure provides appropriate capacity.
Neither agency raised any concerns when we routed for comment, if that helps.
Except it would currently be excluded with the proposal, correct?
Right, so they wouldn't be evaluating. Good point.
Wouldn't they have to demonstrate capacity to get a building permit? I mean, would you have to be able to show that you can, well, I mean, so one of my questions has been, you don't have to have a septic tank. Under this, you can have other sanitation facilities. You could have a composting toilet in gray water, right? You don't even have to connect the sewer. But you do have to have some source of water because you can't bring in bottled water and stuff like that.
Cody just raised his hand, but I want to add that sometimes when you think it's a good idea at first, you spend time evaluating it and you think that, you know, and now I think, I don't really think that the CSD boundary is that great of an idea. It made it more complicated. We're all confused. So, you know, at first I thought it was a great idea for implementation because it's hard to implement these ordinances sometimes. But when you go through it, yeah, it is more confusing now. So there isn't a health and safety reason for why I promoted that. It was just for implementation. So go ahead, Cody.
I was just going to add that my understanding of the ordinance as it is, it does not allow for composting toilets. And that it's, they were very specific in regards to how the septic systems had to be there. That was actually one of the things that I remember being a pretty big push on. I would also add, you know, I believe Christie had made some comments in there in regards to her concerns that she had kind of touching on the, the, you know, having those septics and wells close. I think the CSD originally was brought up because in the original ordinance, there was a lot of concern that we would have a lot of these around individuals that thought that it was going to lower their, the value, the value of their homes. So I think the CSD part was brought in there as a way to kind of limit that. But I do agree that it does get a little murky, especially when you hear the comments that Ms. Wright made about, you know, she's part of that district but not receiving it. So I wouldn't necessarily be against us looking at something that we could, you know, reach out to those community service districts to ensure that they are on it, or if they are not on it. That's my two cents.
So I'd like to add that the sanitation facility section, which is "A water closet shall not be required when an alternate system is provided and has been approved by the local health official where an alternative to the water closet is installed. A system for the disposal or treatment of gray water shall be provided to the dwelling. Gray water systems shall be designed according to water availability, use, and discharge. The design, use, and maintenance standards of such systems shall be the prerogative of the local health official and shall comply with the requirements of Trinity County Code." And I want to clarify further, it was just a little misunderstanding by Cody. I am definitely the one that suggested adding CSDs. And it was only off of the comment from Dan Frazier that that was maybe a mechanism for implementing. implementing the concept of rural. Because this is a, this ordinance is for rural limited density.
So there is Q sanitation requirements. Sanitation requirements, including the type, design, and number of facilities as required and approved by the county health officials shall be provided to the dwelling site. It shall not be required that such facilities be located within the dwelling.
Q and S.
Yeah, so my understanding when we first discussed this was that you did not have to necessarily have a septic tank. But I think that becomes a moot point. If we have a one-acre minimum, then their chance of actually having a septic tank is larger than if it was zero acreage at the minimum.
So Christie and the environmental health director's comment was that she cannot legally approve a septic system on a parcel less than half acre because of setback requirements.
Correct.
And then she also goes on to mention the slope as well. As Post Mountain is known to be on a mountain, do we have an idea of how many properties would be impacted by the slope? How many parcels?
Uh-uh.
I, I know in Ruth that the, the two places in Southern Trinity that have the or have heavy concentration of small parcels. One is next to the church, just across the street from it. And there's like maybe eight parcels there. I don't think maybe two or three of those have, are over the one-acre parcel. And then the rest of them are just like, like one lady who, um, she's no longer in the area, but is like, um, they lost their place in the fire. But it was like 0.97, 0.97 acres is what they had. But on there, but it's like you have this little group right there, but the whole spot is flat. It was like there's, there's, but you get outside of that one little pocket that was there. And I believe that one pocket was actually broke up originally. It was all owned by one family. And it was so that all the kids could have a part and live right there. And then it's like, over the years, it was like, it just sold off to different people. And it was like, so when, when I look at this, it was like, from the Ruth perspective, because like, I don't know much about Weverville, but it was like, from the Ruth perspective, it was like, that's perfect for that zone right there, that one little spot. And then the other spot is down by the school at Mad River, but I don't know what the acre parcels are right there. I'm just familiar with the stuff around the Ruth. But that's all flat. And it's like, so all the zoning or all the access and egress for firefighters and stuff like that. And it's like, well, if it's, if the road is blocked, you can just drive in the ditch because it's all flat.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
So I would be willing to amend my motion if my secondor agrees to delete the requirements or to delete the references to the community services district and simply to change the minimum parcel size to one acre. Dawn, what do you think?
I think that's great.
Okay. We got a motion, we got a second. Shall we have a roll call? Or do you have any more discussion?
I don't know, do any more discussion?
Did you have any more? Anything hold you back?
Do you want more data? You, if you, if you want more information before it's presented to the board supervisors, you know, we can.
Dawn, would, would you mind seconding that motion?
I second that motion.
Thank you.
I am still a little bit concerned. I would like to know more about how the sewer and water implementation under this would affect, specifically Post Mountain as the example. I'm still concerned about water and sewer contamination in that area if we do lower it to one because it's, there's only one parcel within that area that would not be eligible under this. Also, if we can find, grab the acreage for what that one parcel is.
I got it. It's, it's roughly 0.6 acre.
Okay, 0.6.
Yeah, I looked at all, I looked at a bunch of the parcels in Post Mountain and they were almost all above one acre.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's 99.998.
No, we can't pick up every single parcel.
No.
Right. Um, I'm just concerned that with the allowance for more development, right? And it is a subdivision that will be fairly dense with housings. And then if you're going to allow ADUs and potentially junior additional dwelling units to be built under the same ordinance on those parcels as well, then we could potentially see issues with sewer and water contamination. And so also just with our climate being drier, water rights issues, water issues, I don't know that having wells at every single one of these parcels would be appropriate. Now, that's not necessarily my job to determine that. That's what building and planning is for. I do support the building. I'm just still a little bit hesitant relative to that one area maybe. Looking at other areas that have mutual water companies and those kinds of things that weren't looking at excluded, being excluded, I could see how this can readily be utilized within those areas. So I just have a concern for water and sewer in that one community. And it, there may be others if we lower it that quickly without thinking about consequences.
So I'm just curious about timing. So we, we, we've already, we discussed this last month and then brought it back. I mean, the super, I know Supervisor Fraser is really, yeah, interested in moving this expeditiously. Does staff have any feedback on timing? I mean, it, what, yeah, anyway.
Yes.
Yes.
We're proposing to bring this March 19th to the board of supervisors. If we can certainly ask Christie Anderson to weigh in on your specific concerns and bring that to the board.
I think it could also be appropriate to address these concerns in the Post Mountain section, the community planning as well. And so if there's opportunity to address those under the community plan, then I would feel more comfortable moving forward tonight.
So we could ask the planning commission to, as a consensus, to address those issues. Have the consultant address those issues as they're working on the community plan, for sure.
Go ahead, Dawn.
So sewer and water, they have to qualify for those things before they build. This isn't a, this isn't just, oh, you get to build because you have an acre. So a lot of those concerns are met in the process of
Correct.
of getting your permit in the first place. So, and, and then the other thing is, I believe most people are gonna be building with cash because they're not gonna be able to get loans to do this because it's not gonna comply with things. So we're not gonna have a flood of people coming in and, and building these things. It's not gonna happen. All of a sudden, we have 2,000 new homes being built. It's gonna be a few. I think it's a good place to start. And I think, I think the one comment that we heard about was it Trinity Pines or Post Mountain was the, the reality is that they get to build real homes. They're gonna stay and they're gonna become better community, which is gonna make it. So they probably become more fire safe because they're gonna be more concerned. You're gonna have better roads because they need to ingress and, and easier for themselves as well. So I think those things will come along with it. And I think that this is just a great way to, to kind of get the ball rolling, get some more things happening. Uh, we do need more housing, period. This place needs it. Um, Trinity County needs more than any other county.
Correct. And I, I agree 100% to everything you've said. And one of the elements that I was thinking, which probably reiterates what Dawn just said, but it was like, when you go and you apply for this, when you, when you go and Christie goes out there and checks and says, okay, you can push your septic system here, your well is here, and then say your neighbor is doing it, all of that is going to be taken into effect in the calculations and all that stuff. Because it's like when we, after the church lost its stuff during the August fire and stuff like that, Christie is like, okay, give me a pot, pot, plot pan, plan of, uh, where it's at on the property. And I showed her this, and then I showed her the neighbor's property. And she goes, well, how far is that from your neighbor's well? Your, this, this, the septic system that we put in, I was like, man, it's over a quarter mile away. And so, but the thing is, it was like, she was checking in to make sure that we had the exact distance or the enough distance from the neighbor's well from our septic and our own well from our own septic and stuff of that nature. And so I think that when we take and you get all of the parameter offsets of their parameters and stuff like that, you won't be having an issue with the contamination in the water. And like, I believe like Dawn said, it's like, I don't foresee all of a sudden we have 5,000 new houses out there in the pines. It was like, I think that we're gonna have an increase in some, but I don't believe everybody's going to be doing it. And so, uh, and then besides, honestly, I had a friend who, uh, lived out in the pines and it was like, I met him out and hitchhiking back to the pines. That's how I went, and I went and I saw where he lived. Now that was not sanitary whatsoever. And it was like, and he's no longer there, but it was like, but, um, having a little bit of Christie Anderson going out there and saying, you need a septic tank here instead of you just going out behind the tree next to the neighbor's parcel or whatever. It was like, that I think would be a really, this would be a great start. What's that? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But it's like, I think this would be a really great start for, um, for, um, the pines area.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that point helps that bringing more people up into compliance would be good. Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Carol.
Um, I think Cody has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Ms. Cody.
Sorry, I just wanted to add for clarity in terms of our review process. The building division has a review process. And how that process works is that when a building permit is submitted, referral letters are sent out to the planning division, environmental health, department of transportation, Cal Fire. And if it's within the Weverville district, it goes to the Weverville Volunteer Fire Department. So I think some of the things kind of you guys were addressing, that's going to encompass that. It's, it's definitely not a you come in and pull a permit, you're just gonna get it. It's gonna be reviewed pretty thoroughly by all departments before anything is issued or any construction begins.
Thank you. You, you good?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we want a roll call, Ms. Debbie?
Did you want me to restate my motion?
Well, my, my confusion is because we amended the motion and I have a different second. So I'm.
Please. I think you seconded my.
Your amendment.
The amendment.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out which.
Okay, would you, would you reclarify?
The original motion set or the amended motion set for vote?
So let me, yeah, let me.
Yeah.
Okay. I can restate. I move that the planning commission recommend the draft ordinance amendment DEV-23-03 to Trinity County Code 15.25.3030 with a one-acre minute, minimum parcel size and deleting references to CSDs. And that section 15.25.040X fire safety requirements be added stating all new structures shall comply with the California Building Code 7A, PRC 4290 and 4291, California Residential Building Code R302, and the Trinity County Fire Safe Ordinance TCC 8.30. For the purposes of this chapter, residential fire sprinklers shall not be required in limited-density rural dwellings. And amend 15.25.05 existing structures to state for a period of five years after adoption.
Okay.
I have a thought on that. What if we were to make it seven years? I'm sorry for, and, and the reason I say that is I know personally of several people who have, um, who fit into the category of unpermitted homes. I know of many people. And the thing is, and I know some of them because of the economic slump that we're in, that it was like, right now, they would like to, they would like to get permitted. And it was like, but right now, the economic slump, they're like, I can't do it financially. And so it's like, so they are holding back because they're like, I can't do it. And it was like, who knows how long this economic slump stuff is gonna go for? Because it was like, because honestly, in South County, things are pretty tight down there. And so what, what do y'all think about extending out a couple extra years? Just giving it a little bit of a, um.
Isn't there three years on the permit? For completion, it's open for three years after you apply, correct? If you apply and you get the permit? Is that correct?
It's, it's actually longer than that. Because you, it's longer than that in terms of if you're making significant progress.
You're making progress.
Right.
Extending it.
I mean, applying for the permit, applying for the permit's part of the process. You need seven years, then you apply in five years, you're gonna have eight years already. So I think keep it the same.
Is, end up again?
Is it current, um, they, they're not enrolling in the permitting process because they're unable to pay the permitting fees?
Correct.
I'm wondering if there's also a potential issue along the financial question as far as people who are close to compliance but would need to make improvements to meet compliance?
There's a little bit of that included.
Okay.
And so it's like to, for them to come up with the resources for the permits and then to make the appropriate, uh, improvements upon their home. They don't have it just right at the moment. And it was like, and they're like, you know what? I desire, they've, they've talked to me about, they said, I would desire to, to do it, but it was like, but right now, we can't do it. And I think personally, in the long run, the county would be better off if, given the grace period, just a little bit longer, hoping that things will start improving a little bit so that it's like, so we could, the county could get that extra revenue.
Yeah, but then again, I mean, you, you want to have these people come into compliance. I mean, just, it just seems like you're dragging it out.
Well, I, I think there's also.
There's an incentive to, to actually take advantage of this. But if you keep dragging it out, what's the incentive?
I think there could also be financial incentives though to offset those. I think there could be discussions amongst the board of supervisors, not necessarily for us to look at potential to waive portions or to identify people that are making improvements onto their homes to look at reducing their permitting fee by the amount that they're having to invest to a, to a null point, um, to be able to bring more people in compliance, if that's what we're hoping to do with this. That's not my place to make those decisions. But if, if our goal is compliance, I think there could be other fiscal incentives down the line.
Dawn, do you have a thought on that?
I think that we can, and I don't want to sound cold, but we can't wait forever. And sometimes it just doesn't work. And that's unfortunate. But this is a point to, to launch from and it's still forward motion. It's something that everybody says they need. And we're only looking at a few people that were hoping to get along. But I'm sure there's a way to figure it out for them somewhere down the line. And five years is a long time.
For clarification, if somebody was in the permitting process and needed in excess of five years, would they be able to come to the planning commission and apply for a variance for an extension? To come into compliance?
Variances are for unique circumstances based on parcel size, shape, topography, not for building permit.
You can't consider environmental economic considerations.
No, that's not the jurisdiction, that's not my jurisdiction.
Never mind, I'll just say, let's go with the five-year adoption. I just, I just wanna, I just.
We can always change it if, if it looks like we've got a rush of people.
Okay, but no, yeah.
That's initial reaction, we can research it too.
Right.
Discuss further.
And by no means am I speaking for anyone. But I think, you know, if, if there are clear and expressed financial concerns that it would help to hear more of those so that it could be addressed.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. Then so we'll, how about I just, we'll just stick with the five years of what was the motion in the second. We won't worry about the, um, the rest. the motion in the second, we won't worry about the, um, the rest and we'll just proceed forward and.
Cody raises him.
Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Cody.
I was just going to mention, you know, at the time currently, anyone who is not in compliance, they can come in at any time at all. Um, I don't know why there was a time limit put on this, to be 100% honest with you. In my opinion, as the interim division director, I believe that, that we shouldn't have any kind of limit on it. I mean, at the end of the day, the whole goal is, is to get people in and bring them into compliance so that these structures are safe. Because at the end of the day, that, that's what the, the intent of this is. So, you know, we, we work with people as they're building their homes currently and they're drug out over time. We have a lot of owner builders who are building their own homes and they build as much as they can and then, you know, due to constraints with weather and whatever else, they come back and do it. So, you know, that time limit to me, I, I really think we are trying to bring people in. And, you know, another thing too, you guys were talking about the fees, I also think it's important to remember that there's also school fees. I don't know if anyone's brought those ones up yet, but on residences, you have to pay school developer fees and those are something that are not even handled within the building department office, that's actually handled through the school district.
So, so Cody, when we were first writing this ordinance, our understanding was if someone is out of compliance and they want to come into compliance, they have to meet the current building codes. But we were trying to tell them, if you wanted to come into compliance sooner, you know, within this three-year period, you wouldn't have to meet the current building codes, you could meet the limited density owner-built rural dwelling codes. That's why, well, I'm just trying to answer your question, why it's in there, because we were told that if someone is out of compliance and they want to be in compliance, then, um, there's a, a higher standard for, you know, they have to come into compliance with regular building codes, that they didn't have this option.
That is correct. So if someone comes in now and say they cannot adhere to the standards for the limited density, they do have to adhere to the current code cycle. However, if we're bringing them in under the limited density rural owner builder, we're not talking about code cycles. So that's why in my mind, that, that time limit that we're basically saying, hey, you got to come and do this within X amount of years, is honestly null and void because the code cycles are not something that even comes into play.
Cody, can you explain that a little bit more for me? Um, because how it's currently presented, it sounds to me like if somebody wanted to do an owner-built dwelling today, that they would build their home and then come to get the permit. Whereas my understanding from the original intent was people that had already built their homes were going to be allowed a three-year grace period to apply for the permit and come into compliance. So what I'm hearing.
With the, with this, with the, these standards versus regular building standards.
Okay, but what, what I'm hearing is that it's not encouraging them to apply to have an open permit while they're building their home and that they can just come once their house is complete. So that's, that's why I want clarification, because I'm confused.
That would not be correct, just because the simple fact is you cannot build a structure without having that building permit. So if the building division became aware of a residence being built without a permit, that would basically end up being a violation. So this doesn't encourage you to essentially get around the permitting process. I would say this encourages you to come in and pull the permit first, knowing that you don't have to adhere to the standards of a standard residence that has to adhere to the 202022 California Building Code.
Okay, so if, if we're talking about, or, or what I was talking about earlier with the three years, we're existing structures and bringing them into compliance and we're currently discussing a five-year grace period to bring properties into compliance, two points. One, are we going to, um, we're extending the grace period for the initial five plus for an additional five? Or are we looking to have anyone in the one, two, five acre range have five years to come into compliance?
So it would, if we amended fifteen twenty-five oh five existing structures and it said for a period of five years after adoption, that would apply then to, down to the one acre minimum.
Okay, so everyone, one plus has five years to come.
After adoption, which, you know, we've already used about a year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Cody just really hit the nail on the head. We don't, all those buildings, we want them in compliance. And if you were converting a structure that was a stored structure and you're going to convert it into a house and that structure was built without a permit, you'd be able to do that at any given time anyway, if, even if the building sat there for 20 years without a permit. So that verbiage actually shouldn't even be in there at all.
No, so if you, if you have a structure that you built and it's, and it didn't have a building permit or it's not in compliance, a lot of old buildings never got a building permit, and you wanted to bring them into compliance right now, you have, what Cody is saying, you have to meet the 2022 building standards.
Right.
But what we're saying now is if you're one acres and you're the right zoning and all that, um, you could, um, meet this building standard instead, which is less stringent.
Correct.
And we want, and so that's an incentive for people to come in within this five-year period and get their, their structure permitted under this versus a more stringent.
I understand the incentive part of it, but the reality part of it is what Cody was saying is there isn't a time limit on it. They want every building to come into compliance anyway. So the urgency is nice.
Six years from now, if you, if you didn't take advantage of this window of opportunities, six years from now, you'd have to meet the current building standards to come into compliance.
But I think there's a differentiation, so it, and something that I would like to ask another follow-up question on. So what I'm hearing from Dawn, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ellis.
No, sorry.
And from Cody, is that, you know, in seven years, if somebody comes with a house that wasn't permitted and they want to bring it under compliance, under this ordinance that they could, is that what I'm hearing, Cody?
No, they can't. Wait.
And how, and how I would see it that makes the most sense to me is that, like Commissioner Ellis is saying, is essentially if there was no time limit at all, anybody could come in under that limited density rural owner builder and wouldn't have to adhere to the current code standard. So that's why that time limit is, in a normal world, you would have to, you wouldn't, you could come in at any point. We don't get you other than the fact that if we know you didn't have a permit, well, now you need a permit. But if you came in under that limited density rural owner builder, you wouldn't have to adhere to that code. So that's why I'm saying the incentive is already there by limiting, let's say, sprinklers and energy calculations and all that. The, the incentive is completely there. So really that's where that time limit of saying, hey, you have to come in within this amount of time and in my opinion, I think.
Where in the ordinance, where in the building code does it waive the requirement that you meet the building code? The only place that it waives the requirement to meet, to meet the current building codes is if you are an existing structure that's coming into, um, you know, within that five-year period.
So, uh, my clarification more to that point is, here's a hypothetical. Okay, I have a 10-year-old house that's built to these, um, built under this ordinance so that I could qualify and that kind of stuff, but I don't actually have my permit. Okay, so if we allow a grace period, it, then we're allowing the opportunity that somebody could come in without any violation of being without a permit or anything like that, right? So my concern is, is that if we remove that grace period, that time allowance, what does that mean for the enforcement side of it with people who have those structures and they aren't financially able to come into compliance under the appropriate timeline or some other issue, they choose not to come into compliance, then are they going to be in violation and then have fines or any other issues on the backside?
But I just wanted to, you're, you are, I just, the whole time I've been wanting to say that this is about the penalties that are going to be enforced. That's what the grace period is for. It's not about building code, is the way I see it and that's the way it's written in the code. Um, and I think Cody can speak more to it, but we have very similar, zoning enforcement is very similar processes in that we, we ask for voluntary compliance first. We're not looking to accrue fines immediately. Like we want people to come into the permitting system. But go ahead, Cody, if you want to add anything.
Bella, you hit the nail on the head. That is 100% my objective with all of this, is that, like I've said kind of before, is that we really want to bring people into compliance, but by also meeting minimum standards. Um, you know, in terms of people having fines and this and that, we usually what happens is you double the permit, the permit fee is what happens. So in my eyes, if someone comes in and says, I want to come in under this ordinance, that fee that we would put on top of that is then removed.
Well, the grace period timeline, or you're saying at any time, you would provide that waiver so that there were no penalties?
At any time, because in my eyes, we're trying to bring people in.
But do we have that anywhere legally to protect the homeowners? Is there any legal documentation that states that if they voluntarily come into compliance, that they couldn't be hit with a penalty if we remove the grace period?
Well, but the thing is, this ordinance is for new construction.
And existing.
And to bring existing into compliance.
Exactly.
So new construction has this option and existing construction has the option to meet these criteria, these standards, instead of current building codes when they want to come into compliance.
Uh, um, one of the thoughts that I have though is like, along those lines, is say like where I was sharing earlier about I have, I know some people that are like, oh, I would like to come in, but we can't, we can't swing it right now. What if it was okay, we have the five years, but say seven years, they're like, okay, we can swing it now, but the grace period's gone. And they haven't had a house for 20 years already, you know what? They'd probably be like, you know what, I've gone 25 years already without a permit, just like, I'll just go another 25. It's like, they haven't caught me yet.
Well, but we're kind of going around and around here. I mean, because it's basically, when we first wrote this ordinance, that idea of the three years was that we wanted to give people who have existing structures, the ability to come into compliance with a lesser, less stringent building code. That's the bottom line.
Correct.
So I'm proposing to give them more time, but I don't think we want to really kind of revisit the whole, um, like, okay, if you're out of compliance and you're an existing structure and you got to pay more money and all this stuff to come into compliance, that's wasn't what this was intended to do. I mean, it's just.
I think that what Cody said though was it, this is remove this from the picture, the whole thing. And if you have an unpermitted structure, unless it's red-tagged, you don't have to do anything about it until the county does something. What is happening is you don't, when you decide or figure out that it's beneficial to, for, for you to come into compliance and then the county's going to say, oh, you're a limited, you can qualify.
They can't say that.
They already can't.
Unless it's written in here, they can't give them that option.
No, the three-year thing is, is not, or five-year, Cody is saying that it really doesn't apply because if, let's just say the structure was purchased this year, but it was not in compliance for the last 10 years, does that three years start from the time, the new buyer?
No, the three, no.
See, so that's.
You have to read the ordinance. So the ordinance is going to say, it says, existing structures shall be eligible for permits under this chapter without penalty for a period of three years after adoption of this ordinance. And I'm saying, existing structures should be eligible for permits under this chapter without penalty for a period of five years after adoption of this ordinance. That's what I'm proposing, is that we give them a longer period of time to take advantage of the fact that they would have no penalty and they'd have lower building standard requirements.
And, and my concern is, and I, I'm hearing what Cody's saying and I appreciate that view, but if we don't have something written and documented, if we have staff changes, if we have turnover and the next person doesn't feel the same way, that then we could have individuals penalized for trying to come into compliance.
Well, but it says right here, without penalty. So if they're taking advantage of this ordinance, it says without penalty.
Right, 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 right now. But the, with the proposal to remove that statement overall, that is my concern.
I wasn't proposing to remove it.
Well, the discussion, sorry.
I was only proposing to give them five years instead of three years.
I would add that our concept of voluntary compliance comes from the Trinity County Code Enforcement Manual. So any other new staff would, should follow that unless it's changed.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
I, I think I would like to make a subsequent motion. And it was like, I agree with you, Ms. Carol, and I think that I would like to make the motion that is like, I move that the planning commission recommend the draft ordinance amend the DV, DEV dash two-three dash zero-two to the Trinity County Code two, one-five dash or dot two, two, two-five dot zero-three-zero with a one acre minimum parcel size and that the section fifteen point two-five point zero-four-zero add the fire safety requirements added stating that all new structural shall comply with the California Building Code, chapter seven A, PRC four-two-nine-zero and four-two-nine-one, and the Trinity County Fighter Safety Ordinance TC, TCC eight point three zero, for the purposes of this chap, chapter residential fire sprinkler shall not be required in the limited density thing. And then it was like, and then it was like, and then scratch that five-year grace period and then it was like, because that's, that's my, that's what I personally think and it's like, so I'll make that subsequent motion. But also you had in there the California Residential Building Code R three oh two or three oh three.
So you're proposing to delete section fifteen twenty-five point zero-five-zero? You're proposing to delete that whole section?
Yes.
Okay, and does your current, will your motion still remove, um, the boundaries of the CSDs or are you adding those boundaries back?
Restriction of the C, the, yeah, the CSD. Oh.
The completion of that would be also deleting the restriction of the CSD.
Correct, correct, with deleting the CSD.
And I think I'm probably the.
You need a second.
Huh?
You need a second.
I'll second.
So Ms. Debbie, do we have a?
Well, I have a question. So if you delete that whole section and someone wants to come in and come into compliance, then they're subject to a penalty potentially? Because you've.
They would be subject to the penalty?
Even if they're volunteer, volunt, if they're voluntarily coming into compliance, then they're not subject to penalty?
Correct.
If you. So if they're voluntarily coming into compliance, they're not subject to penalty. But if there is some other enforcement that comes about that would identify a property that is out of compliance and they're coming into compliance non-voluntarily, then they would have penalties?
No, it, it starts like sequentially. So we ask for voluntary compliance first and if they don't comply with the timelines that we've set forth, then they may acquire penalties. But we are, I mean, Cody and I, in our current standing are realistic people, so.
But what if this, I mean, this was your point earlier, what if there's personnel changes?
I understand.
Somebody else could come in and say.
Feel free to leave it.
If you're not in compliance, you're, I'm going to start levying penalties to bring people into compliance. Cause you've taken away the option that gives them a waiver of the penalty. Cause you've taken away the option that gives them a waiver of the penalty.
I would advise you to keep that section in the ordinance. We're not, you know, I mean, feel free to extend it, but. Unless, I just don't see the purpose of taking it out. Maybe it's confusing to people, but um, that's how the ordinance stands already. And that does provide you with some type of. Incentive for future staff mentality changes.
Or what about we just say we, uh, will, will keep it, but reword it to the existing structure shall be eligible for permits. Under this chapter without penalty. For indefinite, indefinite period of time.
It's up to you guys.
What do y'all think of that?
Again, you, you're taking away their incentive to come into compliance.
If we're going to do incentive, we need to go back to the five years and, and stick with that way. Cause I agree with the incentive part, if that's in the concern about the um, non penalty being the incentive.
Because.
But it, I, I don't think that it's, um, I think that as Bella said, it's going to be, you know, you're called in to come into compliance and you're given the option at first anyway. That's going to happen eventually. Or not. So I think that we should go back to five and stick with that. For that reason.
I, I like to clarify that staff doesn't um, speak for, you mean, me and Cody do not speak for code enforcement staff that is under the sheriff's department.
That's all right. I'll, I'll, I'll remove my, um, my motion.
We have to.
I'll withdraw it.
You have to get your second or to withdraw.
I will withdraw my second.
Hey, Ms. Debbie, I think we're ready for roll call.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote on your?
Aye.
Promotion, first motion with the added amendments.
Aye.
Commissioner Fall.
Aye.
Commissioner Fleas.
Aye.
Chair Heaton.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed four, zero.
We about beat that horse to death, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
We want to take a break.
Uh, uh, how about everybody, we're going to take a five minute break and uh, we'll resume at. Eight, ten. How's that? Okay, yeah, ten, okay, yeah, ten minute break and we'll, we'll resume back at eight, fifteen. Ms. Carroll, we did it, we did it. It was like, but the thing is, is like, and I'm not.
This will be good. I mean, this will be good for folks. Bottom line is it'll be good for folks.
But it's like, and it's like. And it was like, but it was like. Ms. Carroll.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to tell you something.
Yeah?
It was like, it was like, I know I'm arguing with you or whatever, but it's like, thank you. It's like, I'll, I'll, it's like, sometimes I mean, I see things just, it's like, it's muddy or whatever. I appreciate you. And I appreciate. Yeah, well, there is, there is a little bit of stuff, but the thing is, it was like, I appreciate you. It was like, you're.
Well, I just, I agree. I mean, I, one acre makes sense to me. I, I think it's giving them an incentive. The deleting the CSD stuff made sense, make it easier for people to figure it out. You know, so I think it'll look good to the board of supervisors. And Dan will be happy.
Oh, who knows? Carol was on a roll.
Oh, yeah, that was, I thought that was the easy one. You stay up till ten all night.
No. Are you going to?
In the session, and we are going to continue on with item number four. Zoning text amendment amend trendy county code county code section seventeen point four three. D E V dash two four dash zero two. The purpose of this agenda item is for the planning commission to make a recommendation to the board. Supervisors to adopt an ordinance amendment of trendy county code. Titles seventeen section seventeen point four three dash zero five zero A eight. To exchange the term cultivation to canopy section seventeen point four three point zero five zero A nine. Was added to clarify the property line setback requirement for medium licenses section seventeen point four three point zero five one. Was added to convert the existing commercial cultivation cannabis variants. Process to an administrative buffer reduction director's use permit. No other ordinance revisions are to be considered at this time countywide review staff, Mr. Plaboni.
Good evening Chair Commissioners Drew Plaboni Cannabis Division Director. Commissioner Eaton, thank you for that introduction and the project description. For this item this evening, you should have a staff report and three memos. The three memos are dated February sixth, February seventh, and February eighth. I guess I'll I'll give a little bit of background discussion. I'm not going to dive too deeply into going over these things because I imagine they will hopefully all be clarified during the questions. But essentially the background discussion and I guess let me clarify the the memos, the three memos. The February sixth memo is comments received. The February seventh memo is sort of a. Compilation of sections from the E I R. Along with some, a number of additional attachments. So those are highlighted sections of the cannabis program final E I R. Background and discussion to resolution twenty twenty three zero seven one, which was a resolution by the Board of Supervisors. That adopted the streamlining of and waiving of the C C V requirement during the twenty twenty three calendar year. Which on the February sixth, this past Tuesday, board meeting was extended. Until the end of April of twenty twenty four, ideally to give us time to. Adopt these changes and and put them into effect, the proposed changes tonight. There's also the Board of Supervisors agenda item from the December nineteenth. Twenty twenty three meeting, just to give a little bit of additional background and there are. Four essentially sample maps or example maps, I guess you could call them. One is taken from a an actual project, a C C V project that was presented here. Previously, and then three example maps, just kind of showing the difference between cultivation and canopy. And also just kind of to hopefully more clearly define. The potential future mapping standards related to a setback map versus a buffer map and and we can certainly. Get into, you know, a more clear description and and discussion of those. Maps, so. One of the, so and then the third February eighth memo includes resolution twenty twenty dash one zero three. Which was the. Give me one sec. It was a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, basically certifying the environmental impact report. At the time it was, you know, certified and and adopted as a final E I R. It also includes the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That, you know, we refer to as M M R P. So in the background, that resolution twenty twenty one zero three was adopted on. December twenty first, twenty twenty, and then following that ordinance number three one five eight four nine. Was adopted to incorporate the mitigations from that certified programmatic E I R. And in addition, you know, specific regulations for. The cultivation of cannabis, including section seventeen four three zero five zero, which is, you know, what we're discussing changes to tonight. Some, you know, kind of additional background, and I know we've we've sort of gone over this previously as it relates, you know, from the last planning commission meeting where we had a. Discussion slash study session at the request of the Board of Supervisors specifically related to. The C C V resolution, but you know, we got into a lot of overlapping topics because. It it's about, it was about waiving the requirement for C C Vs, which is what we're trying to address and and just kind of improve the existing process. And that is, you know, sort of the intent of the proposed changes before you tonight. I don't know how much you guys would like me to read or sort of go through now. From the staff report in terms of the proposed changes. I'm happy to, you know, kind of more clearly. Describe, or I can just restate the the sort of highlights, and I think I'll just go ahead and do that. Section seventeen four three zero five zero eight eight, we've proposed to exchange the term cultivation to canopy. And so a little bit related to that. Originally, sort of from the start of the program. The interpretation of staff and and the practice of. Planning, you know, the planning division and cannabis licensing program was that. Cultivation sites in many cases were configured to meet the three hundred and fifty foot residential setback requirement. And were configured from mature canopy. Being the point of measurement between cultivation, we'll say, or part of cultivation to the adjacent residents. In early twenty twenty two, staff changed the interpretation after, you know, I guess rereading. The specific code sections and and the reference to the definition of cultivation, which includes more than just mature canopy. So. One of the things that that created was that. There were previously configured sites that when they were developed. Took into consideration the existing practice of the planning department at that time, which was to measure from canopy. To the adjacent residents. Many of the many sites built outbuildings to facilitate what I would describe as post harvest processes. So, you know, you you grow your cannabis plants, you harvest them, and then you need to put them in some sort of. Secure and enclosed structure for drying, you know, trimming, storage, things like that. And so there are a good number of sites that. Received a variance. From the planning commission. Related to the distance from mature canopy to an adjacent residence. With the change of interpretation that happened in twenty twenty two. Many of those initial C C Vs and and those sites that had been in operation, let's say, in some instances from the very beginning of the program. Would then have been required to come back before you all as a new initial variance. Because the distances specified in the staff report and. In in those approvals would have changed because the distances would be measured from the outbuildings, for instance, versus mature canopy. So the other, the other sort of highlights were that. Section subsection A nine was added just to clarify the difference. Between the property line setback requirement for medium licenses and the residential setback requirement for small licenses, just to kind of, they were just kind of all. Jammed together in the same section, so. The decision was made just to kind of separate them and and put them under separate subsections, just to clarify that. And then seventeen four three zero five one was added to convert the existing. Process to an administrative buffer reduction director's use permit process. And, you know, we did have a a good bit of discussion about what that process would look like. From the recommendations or from the discussion and then subsequently the recommendations that were made by planning commission to the Board of Supervisors. For the extension of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero seven one. I guess I'll just go ahead and and cover sort of what planning commissions recommendations related to. The C C V resolution and and the extension were. And and your your recommendations were to update chapter seventeen four three zero five zero eight eight to replace the term cultivation with canopy. And propose that the existing commercial cultivation variance process be converted to an administrative buffer reduction. And that is specifically what we are here to. Discuss with you this evening and for you to provide recommendations to the board as it relates to the adoption of these proposed ordinance amendments. I don't know if you have any technical or clarifying questions now, I'm happy to answer them or at any point during this hearing.
Do you have any questions for Seth?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Okay, you'll have to forgive me, I did start watching the last planning meeting, but I did not complete it all. And so my first question is, will these changes apply to all permittees existing and future? Or will this only apply to future permittees?
As proposed, this would apply to all program participants. Past, past or future.
Okay. And is there a reason why we changed or the proposal is to change under special cottage from cultivation to canopy? But then for medium licenses, we're keeping cultivation? And not changing it to canopy?
Well. I I didn't. We 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 have, you know, for the whole program, you know, there there's a total of essentially five hundred and thirty cultivation licenses that that are. Allowed through the current ordinance. Of that five thirty, there are fifteen type three or medium licenses. And I believe there are a handful of issued active type three licenses in the county currently. To my understanding, every single one of those type three licenses. As part of their C U P process came before. Came before the planning commission with a request for a variance to that five hundred foot property line setback. And so it it's not exactly the same where those sites. One, they don't have a residential setback requirement in. They just have the five hundred foot property line setback requirement. We certainly could consider changing from cultivation to canopy. But since the majority of C C Vs. Well, really all C C Vs are for small licenses. It didn't feel necessary to really dive into whether or not for medium licenses, there should be a change. So I I think that's something that you all could suggest, certainly.
Can you provide me with a little bit of background as to why for the cottage we're looking at residential structure? As our buffer rather than the mediums are looking at the property line as the boundaries?
I wish I could. I I do not know why that decision was made. That's one of, you know, related to a residential setback requirement or kind of the the terminology that we're ideally going to move towards is. A buffer from residences. Versus a property line setback, it might have been. More straightforward had we just established for all cultivation sites, a property line setback. But that is not the decision that was made when these ordinance ordinances were adopted. So I apologize that I'm not able to really tell you why that happened the way it did.
That's kind of pre Drew.
Definitely, at least in in this capacity.
I had a couple of questions, so under the the buffer reductions. So a notice of application will be sent to affected property owners. You know, and it's identifying the following, the date and time that the planning director will take action, et cetera. So what's the lead time on that? I mean, is it ten days, ten business days, a couple of weeks? I mean, how far ahead of time do you notify affected property owners?
So my understanding for discretionary permits, D U Ps and C U Ps, that the existing practice is to do. A thirty day request for comments period, so. That would be my expectation that those neighbor notices and all of the agency referrals that went out would. Have a thirty day timeline and then the director could take action. Following the close of the thirty day comment period, but I would assume that, you know, it it would require a little bit of additional time from the close of that thirty day comment period. To review and potentially evaluate. The comments that we received.
So is that kind of a just a standard practice or is it written somewhere that that's what the requirement is?
I I have not seen that specific requirement stated in, you know, the use permit code section for Trinity County. But certainly it is an accepted practice and and my. Inclination is to say that it comes from state law. But I I am not certain, but that certainly is the practice and and that is my expectation that we would continue that practice.
Okay. And then, so if the affected property owners disagree, they may appeal it to the planning commission. So if they want to appeal, do they need to pay the five hundred dollars?
So as part of the C C V resolution that the board adopted. We added a few additional requirements to, you know, I guess find the balance between waiving that requirement. And some of the concerns that were raised. So some of the additional requirements that were incorporated were to send out a neighbor consent opposition letter. And specific to the C C V resolution. Any qualified opposition, and just to define that a little more clearly, a qualified opposition would be from an adjacent residence. Within that three hundred and fifty foot setback requirement. And it needed to be a legal dwelling. So in, and I don't know if you took note of it, but in some of the backup, there are some stats. Related to kind of what transpired, you know, from May to present. From those, from the consent opposition letter. We, and the process was essentially that if a qualified opposition letter was received. That then that project would need to return to the planning commission for an initial C C V hearing. And we would not be able to apply the criteria and the waiving of the C C V requirement for twenty twenty three. Now extended through the end of April twenty twenty four. So we received. Two opposition letters. One was later retracted by the opposing party. And the other was not qualified because it was from a property owner that had no dwelling. To my knowledge, no, it was a vacant parcel, so they didn't, they didn't meet those, you know, qualification criteria. The other things that we included for sites that did not meet the three hundred and fifty foot residential setback requirement. Staff did an evaluation of the E I R and. Identified some of the resource categories that they thought would potentially be, you know, the most, the had the greatest potential to impact adjacent residences. So that was noise, light and odor. So as a part of the requirements required. Components to their environmental document, the appendix C document, in this case for small licenses. They were required to provide additional noise, light and odor attenuation plans. And for. All parcels with the exception of ag zone parcels, they're required to submit an odor control plan as required elements to their appendix C. So I I think that it it would be. Probably appropriate to continue forward with a consent opposition type form letter. And then if. Opposite qualified opposition was received that we would then bring that buffer reduction to the planning commission for you to weigh in on it.
Well, okay, but that's not what it says, so. So you're saying instead of a notice of application, you would include also the consent opposition letter?
If that's what you think is appropriate, that's certainly something that we could add to this process or, you know, that you could make the recommendation and and obviously the board can can weigh in on that as well when it when it gets to the board level.
And then, because basically what it's saying is, so the affected property owner gets a notice of application. Hopefully thirty days before the planning director will take action on the application. It's got a date and time comments have to be submitted to the county. Then it says, the planning director may at their discretion schedule a hearing by the commission. Any application for planning director's use permit. So this looks to me like the way it's written, the planning director has the. Option of scheduling it for a hearing. If they've received comments, I'm assuming. But then it says, if they disagree with a director, the decision of the directors, they may appeal it to the planning commission. Per county code, I didn't look up that county code, but my original question was. Right now, if someone wants to appeal a decision, they have to pay a five hundred dollar fee. So, you know, what exactly is the. Opportunity for these affected property owners to say they disagree with the planning with directors. The D U P and they want to have it be considered by the planning commission. Is the only way that they can do that? If the planning director decides he doesn't want to put it forward for a hearing, is the only way that they can do that? By paying the five hundred dollars and submitting an appeal?
With the language as proposed, I would say it does not clearly define, you know, what what you're asking about. And that's why I sort of propose just for your consideration, if you feel it's appropriate.
The current C C V process?
To include the consent opposition letter along with the notice of application, you know, that that's certainly at your.
Yeah, I mean, I think the consent opposition letter makes it easy for you. Okay, you know, yes, I oppose it, no, I don't, I'm not qualified, whatever. But I'm concerned about where the process goes from there if the affected. You know, homeowner essentially says. If if the planning director says, I think we should approve this. Buffer reduction and the affected. Homeowner says, I don't agree with that for whatever reason. Then what? Is it just the appeal process or?
Right, so again, as currently constructed, it would be just the appeal process.
Which is pay the five hundred dollars?
Correct.
That's not, is that waived as part of the C C V variance?
No, that was sort of the, you know, balance that we found in in sort of the discussion with ad hoc was to. Include that consent opposition letter and then it would come before you all. So again, certainly something you could as a commission choose to modify the existing language to include that as a. Criteria for it to come before you.
Is it possible to say if the. The homeowner disagrees with the planning director's decision that it automatically comes to the planning commission?
Well, if they disagree with the director's decision, per code section seventeen three four, which is the appeals code section. They're afforded the ability to appeal the director's decision, which is, you know.
But they have to pay the five hundred bucks. I mean, it just seems like they should have the ability to. Get their two cents heard before the planning commission if they disagree with the planning director without paying money.
Yeah, and I I I think it's a pretty straightforward sort of, you know, partial sentence to add if if you all wish to include, you know, a criteria. Whereby if, you know, the planning director or staff receive a consent opposition letter related to. The administrative buffer reduction director's use permit notice of application. That it would say, you know, if a qualified consent opposition letter is received, it will be heard by the planning commission.
Okay.
So I have a question on that. You only get a qualified letter?
So I have a question on that. You only get a qualified letter if it's, if it's a neighboring property that's within the three hundred fifty foot buffer zone, correct? It would, and that opposition would only be in that case. If it's outside of that three hundred fifty foot, you don't really have a qualified opposition.
Right, because they're not affected as it relates to, you know, approving a buffer reduction because they're outside of that buffer zone. And so they would have the same, you know, opportunity afforded to them as as any other person um or interested party to, you know, appeal the director's decision to issue a license or in this case, issue a director's use permit.
Well, would it not be correct to that if it's within the three hundred fifty foot? And there's a qualified structure and they oppose it, that that, isn't that the stopping point of that license being issued anyway? Because now you're, because that's the, that's the restrictive boundary. And unless that property owner says it's okay, it shouldn't go any further anyway.
Well, you know, my my take on it, and I don't disagree with your statement, um, but my take on it would be that, you know, similar to the way that this CCV process um has occurred historically, that rather, that that, you know, the planning commission as a hearing body would have the opportunity to weigh in on the merit of, you know, the the neighbor's opposition, rather than it being sort of a, you know, de facto um denial of.
I thought that was the way in, the three hundred fifty foot setback is the way in. That's what we stated as a county. And so when they're, when the person applies for that application, knowing that, that's the one variable that they're, they're hoping to over um to overturn. And it may well happen if the neighbor says yes, but if the neighbor says no, that's why we have that three hundred fifty foot setback. It's for that neighbor's perceived protection or comfort zone. It's the same thing. It's fair. That's why we came up with three hundred fifty feet. If if three hundred fifty feet isn't fair, then it shouldn't be the setback. And it should, I mean, it should save you time and it should save us time and it should save the applicant time. If they go, oh, that building's three hundred feet away and my neighbor doesn't want me there, I can't do it. And it's unfortunate for the person applying, but it's not for the person that doesn't want it there that has the other side of it. So why is that? Why would that even come into consideration is my question.
Um, I I think the reason that that would be considered is that what we're proposing is a transitional process, if you will. And so one of the, you know, issues with staff's change of interpretation is that there are a good number of sites that were configured in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen that have been compliant and in operation since that time. And with staff's change of interpretation, they were, they were currently are required to, um, you know, once this resolution ends, if these changes aren't adopted, they would be required to come before you for a CCV hearing.
Okay, so with these changes, if they're adopted, the three hundred fifty foot setback would be from the new terminology, canopy instead of cultivation, would not include the structures necessarily. And that wouldn't affect the the previous permits that have already been put into play. And the future people coming in would have a very clear line. It's three hundred fifty feet. It, I mean, it's three hundred fifty feet. That seems simple to me.
Sure.
And why can't it be that?
It certainly could be that. And the other sort of, you know, variation of that would just be to specify that new licenses with qualified opposition would would not.
I agree. I think that if it wasn't there before and they were given a license, there should be, there should be some room. Definitely. Okay, thank you.
So, okay. Potentially, we could say if a qualified consent opposition letter is received, the planning director would deny the um buffer reduction application unless it's from uh, one of the people under five A and B. Right, the adjac- because we wouldn't want to have
Sure.
adjacent competitive growers complaining about their.
And then that, that applicant, if the um director denied their request for the buffer reduction would then be afforded the ability to appeal the director's decision and bring it before you all um for an appeal of the director's decision as a hearing.
Okay. Okay, so tho- that's, those are my questions regarding essentially the um affected property owners. I had a couple other ones. So one of the comment letters we received asked about um flowering plants. So when I read the definition of mature plants, that includes flowering. So.
Right, flowering is what makes it a mature plant?
So the odor issues are for the whole period from flowering till harvest. And um, how many weeks is that?
Um, I think it depends on the variety that's being grown. Um, typically, I would say, you know, maybe eight to ten weeks.
Okay, but but theoretically, um, like by the definition of mature plants, that does include the flowering plants, right?
That, right, that, the the process of the plant's flowering um is what makes them defined as mature. The other thing to note is that from a DCC licensing and site plan perspective, you have to clearly define your mature cultivation area. And so, you know, it would be, those areas are clearly defined on on the maps, both within the appendix C and and at the state level for state licensure.
So the flowering plants would have to be three hundred fifty feet away from a structure unless they got this adminis- the buffer reduction?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But only a residential structure, only one that's being inhabited, not just a shed or something like that on somebody else's property?
Yeah, that was my next question. So can you only complain about odors from your house? Like if you're, you know, you're working in your shop or your barn or something, and the barn is less than three hundred fifty feet away and you still have odor issues, I mean, can you complain about odors from other places on your property?
I don't want to make a offhand comment, but you know, anyone can complain about anything they want.
Right, yeah.
As it, as it relates to the residential setback requirement, it's specific to the residence and the residential structure. And and that is the way that, you know, from a, from the standpoint of an administrative process, you know, it's a bit difficult to identify where some of these other activities that might occur on a residential property would be. And and that would be a good reason, you know, in the beginning of things to have established a property line setback and
Yeah.
not, you know, from an adjacent residence, but we're working with what we've got, so.
Yeah, I get the three hundred fifty feet, but I'm just, so what other um options are available to someone if they're dealing with that issue? Can they just submit a nuisance complaint that I can, you know, it's, I can smell this from my barn or I'm getting dust from, you know, um, commercial traffic on my road from my barn? I mean, other nuisance type issues. You couldn't say, well, you're in violation of the three hundred fifty foot residential setback, but are there other options to complain about nuisance issues?
There is a complaint portal that exists on the planning department website, and we get all sorts of various complaints. In terms of the the mitigation measures that are included in the EIR, um, currently, a a select number of them are included and codified in, um, I think both areas of seventeen four three and seventeen four three G um as performance standards. Uh, one of the discussions that we've had with ad hoc is to incorporate the, all of the mitigation measures that were deemed applicable to any project as a performance standard. Um, and so I I do expect that to kind of be where we land in the broad round of ordinance revisions. Specific to odor, uh, that that's a a significant conversation and I'm willing to go there if if that is your desire this evening. So, but I would love to kind of try and stay on topic as it relates to the residential setback requirement. Um, but if it's helpful, I'm happy to dive into that very robust and confusing topic.
Well, that, yeah, unfortunately, that is my next question. Um, so I really appreciated you providing the, you know, extractions from the um EIR because I've read it and tried to find stuff in it and it's so huge. It's, it's easy to get lost. So there is a lot of um language under the air quality part that basically says, you know, that under certain circumstances, the impact can be significant. Um, so, um, how can you say that the proposed amendments have no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment when the EIR talks about um how they can be significant? I'm just confused.
Okay, well, um, it's important to note that in most cases where the EIR references odor specifically in the air quality section, that it's significant and unavoidable. Um, and so one of the excerpts that was also included um is the statement of overriding considerations. And that was the justification to essentially acknowledge the fact that, yes, projects will have impacts. And that there are mitigations that will be applied to all projects to mitigate or reduce those impacts. But that's specific to odor. That's one of the reasons why I included all of those sections, that in in most cases, those impacts are significant and unavoidable.
But it says, you know, so cultivation operations would be required to be set back a minimum of three hundred fifty feet from adjacent ref- residences such that attendant odors would be less likely to be detectable. So, I mean, you know, I just, I just think there's a contradiction there. I don't, I think it's avoidable if you meet the three hundred fifty feet at a minimum.
I think that many people um who have concerns about odor would disagree with your statement. Um, I think it's well acknowledged that odors travel significantly further than three hundred fifty feet.
Two miles is what they're saying.
That's what the EIR says. And so um in discussion at ad hoc today, and I told Dan I would quote him, so I'm going to go ahead and do it. He said that three fifty just got pulled out of someone's ear. And I would say there's no scientific basis that I'm aware of for why three fifty was established. But that is the reason that many of these mitigate, these, the odor control plan and the tiered concept within odor control plans was established as a mitigation measure to basically say, okay, if there are concerns from a- adjacent sensitive receptors, not just residences, but also schools, um residential treatment facilities, daycare centers. There's a, there's a longer list, and forgive me that I don't remember all the specific ones.
Youth oriented facilities, yeah.
Thanks, Carol. Um, that essentially there's that tiered approach. So that one of the things that, you know, the reason that I included many of these excerpts is to sort of evidence the fact that we've acknowledged through the evaluations in the EIR that odor impacts will occur. To your question, I think that an odor impact is not in fact an environmental impact. So that that's.
Air quality.
But it's not quantifiable from, in terms of the rest of the evaluations that are done from air quality, which measure particulate matter size and, you know, potentially VOCs. And so essentially, like, the way I, the way I read the EIR is that we've acknowledged that there will be odor. We've established mitigation measures to mitigate or lessen those odor impacts. But it's, again, acknowledged that they will not be reduced to a non-detect level. Um, and so that is certainly, you know, a point of contention and concern from from some constituents that um find cannabis odors objectionable. And so that is the reason that there is a setback requirement, I think generally, but in terms of, you know, the the three hundred fifty foot setback requirement. Um, and, you know, to your question of what about the other activities on that project? As it stands in our, you know, certified EIR, um, there's a tiered approach to for cultivators to be required a- as one of those applicable mitigation measures um to mitigate the odors. And all sites, with the exception of sites that are on agzone parcels, um, are required to have odor control plans. And so the way that that's sort of set up in the EIR is to essentially create that tiered process. And if there are complaints, then they have to implement their odor control plan. If there's more complaints, they have to, you know, implement the second layer of their odor control plan and so on and so forth. Ultimately, you know, we had a good bit of discussion about this today at ad hoc. They may implement every feasible mitigation measure. And the adjacent to affected parties might still find odor objectionable. And that is the reason, again, that the statement of odor overriding considerations was adopted as it relates to the mitigation measures that were deemed to be significant and unavoidable.
Thanks. That was all I had.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do we have any public comment in the room? We can do Zoom first. Would you prefer Zoom? Okay, any public, any public comment on Zoom?
Veronica? Good evening again. Veronica Kelly Aldees, Douglas City. My first comment on the proposed document is that we no longer have a planning director. That was changed to the community development director. Um, that does not require the planning. Um, so who will be the discretionary authority for for all of those parts? Um, and there were, this issue came up during, um, no, it's not a knock on anybody. It's just a, just a semantic thing for clarity. Um, I love you, Ed. So the, the issue being that um, this issue was brought up during the public workshops and there were a lot of great discussions, and I don't see any of it here. Um, and I appreciate the discussion regarding balance and how that could work. I do support removing the use of the word variance because I think we know that that is not the appropriate one. Um, however, a majority of options available and offered during those public workshops is not showcased here. Um, as it appears, this may fall under an in-house authority for approval. One of my main recommendations, so I, with my three minutes, that's why I talk fast, is that um, I'll I'll address odor because that, for me, in my personal life, has what has been part of my issues. Um, and and Drew spelled it out. They have a plan. There are no rec- there are no requirements that they um start those mitigation measures from the get-go for performance standards. History and county confirmation has shown that they are not currently mandatory. They're listed as options to be used should there be any complaints. With limited staff availability and possible delays in mitigation, equipment, or labor, community complaints may not be addressed in a timely fashion. To alleviate the possibility of odor issues emanating from project site, perhaps we could streamline the process to make these mitigation measures mandatory before use begins. We consistently have projects and staff uh that suggest it is impossible to pinpoint odor, odor to that pro- to that project. Um, and that is starting to to become more of a shield for projects. Because if, you know, if you, we can't pinpoint odor, so it couldn't be me. So maybe we help them eliminate themselves from the process. And that, from that point, we can find nine non-compliant farms that they can then get into the program and mitigate. Please take into consideration that after promises of more public workshops that would include this issue, we are now limited to three minutes, and there's my timer, with no interaction to create a system that offers balance. Dig in, consider staff analysts, uh, analysis, jurisdictions, goals, and policies, and all community input. Um, and are these new parameters considered new requests? There's just a lot of, lot of questions here. So I appreciate all the smart conversations so far this evening. Um, but I do think that there are some issues with the uh buffer. And we just need to clear up, is it ministerial and or how we're doing all this? And we just need to clear up, is it ministerial and or how we're doing all this? Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have another on Zoom?
Trinity Alps Canacraft?
Hello, Commissioner. Matthew Jefferson, Trinity Center, Coffee Creek. We are in support of staff's well-written, knowledgeable and well-informed recommendations. I hope you can pass them as written. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Uh, anybody else on Zoom?
Rhoda? Hi, this is Rhoda Kane from Trinity Center Coffee Creek area. I just want to comment a little bit on what maybe, I'm sorry, I'm not completely familiar with our new commissioner. But one of the reasons that we have setbacks from the canopy or cultivation area that isn't from property lines, that it's from structures is a big part of it is like the shapes and geographic limitations on many of the properties here in Trinity County. So one of the main purposes of the program is to bring existing farms into compliance. We all know that this is cannabis country and it has been for a couple hundred years. And so what we're trying to do is get people that are already cultivating to come into compliance and improve their environmental work. And so the reality is that Trinity County, because of the way the parcels are shaped and our geographic uniqueness here in Trinity County, that many of the properties that we are trying to get into compliance. Like, for example, I have a 10 acre parcel, but it's less than 400 feet wide. So that's a, a big reason that the setbacks are not from property lines. They're to residences instead is because of our limitations in here in Trinity County and our uniqueness. And what also what makes us really cool up here. So I just wanted to put that out there. As hopefully it can clarify some things for some people. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have any other comments on Zoom?
Yes. Catherine?
Catherine Sidman-Lowston. I think Rhoda said it really well. You know, the uniqueness of the topography and the lots and the way things, the way neighborhoods and pockets of humanity are set up in Trinity County is so unique. And I think that that is why it's really important to keep the language consistent that people have been working with now for a while. Where we're talking about setbacks from canopy instead of cultivation. We just don't want to keep moving the goalpost on people. We want to give people something that they can count on and build towards. I really appreciate what staff has put together and I think it's thoughtful. And I'm hearing, when I hear staff speak, I hear a lot of nuanced language that really reflects the concerns on all sides of the issue and I appreciate that. And I think that one of the things that is really important is to keep these processes moving forward and not backwards. And to keep consistent in our language and our actions so that people can and make plans and be part of the really important work, which is economic development and supporting families and supporting livelihoods here in Trinity County. So I really appreciate the staff report. I appreciate the illustrations that they showed that are accurate drawings of real life scenarios and how these things work out with our unique topography, as Rhoda said. And I hope that we can just keep moving this issue forward and not keep going backwards and keep going over settled topics. So I appreciate this and welcome to the new commissioner.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have any other comments?
John Brower?
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yep.
First, I'd like to welcome the new Commissioner Fleitz. Welcome to the party. This, uh, this subject has been, uh, rolling around and twisting through the county for many years. I was a commissioner the night that the original ordinance, urgency ordinance got hammered out and the, uh, the variances and the setbacks were part of the grand compromise that happened at that time in 2016. Since then, the, this, this awkward variant, annual variance process has become a roadblock to other economic development and projects throughout the county. This really sucks up a lot of staff time. And over the years, there's been over 700 licenses issued on different projects. A great deal of them have fallen out of the program over the years for one reason or another. But out of that 700 plus issued, it's about a third total projects that require a variance to the setback. There are very few properties in Trinity County that can operate within the existing setbacks. In fact, zero of the type threes. And so this is an essential component of the program. And what staff has brought here tonight is a very, very thorough fix to this complex problem. I'm in full support of the proposal as written. And I want to encourage approval tonight. It offers a great balance between neighbors having local control and, and a due process for neighbor concerns to be heard. And it, it balances that with the need for applicants to, uh, to build, to get to work in the poorest county in the state and do what we do really well in many parts of the county. But not every part of the county. And I, I think this is a wonderful fit. And I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brower. Uh, anybody else on Zoom?
Daryl Davis?
Hi there, this is Daryl Davis in Junction City. I'm a licensed holder, cannabis farmer. And I just wanted to weigh in and say, uh, thanks for listening to everybody. Please listen to our director, Drew, the board, pretty much everybody else that's spoken here. Don't want to go backwards. Don't want to leave the farmers out on the line like, uh, this is a serious thing that you're contemplating. So I strongly urge you to just listen to everybody here in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Lori Wills?
Good evening, Commissioners. Lori Wills from Lewiston. I just, I, I did a little research today and I didn't have time to put something in writing and submit it. So, um, but I looked at the ordinance in Eldorado County. And just as a, as a different perspective, it's ordinance number 5110. And when it comes to setbacks for their outdoor and mixed like cultivation, their setbacks are a minimum of 800 feet from the property line. And 300 feet from a riparian vegetation or any water course. As far as odor goes, they have an, uh, let's see, it's called an olfacto meter. And I know at one point our county talked about purchasing one, whether or not that ever happened, I don't know. But when the director says there's no way to measure, Eldorado County is pretty clear that they, it says any cannabis odor shall not be equal or greater than a seven dilution threshold, which they refer to as DT. When measured by the county with a field olfacto meter at the property line on which the cannabis is cultivated. It also says that the odor should not be disturbing to people of normal sensitivity. It goes on to say, I mean, there's more to it, but it goes on to say that continued odor in excess of seven DT, one hour upon retesting will constitute a violation of this section, subject to enforcement, abatement and revocation of the commercial cannabis use permit or the operating permit under certain sections. So I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate some of the comments by Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Fall, asking good questions. And especially when it comes to the random setback of 350 feet. And just give you a different perspective of what I found in my quick research of what another county is doing and how they're handling some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wills. Anyone else?
Dana?
Hello, thank you, um, Planning Commission. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I wanted to comment on the mature, the time that a cannabis plant is in the mature state of flowering and how odor relates to that. The, the terpene, the, the odor doesn't really kick in until five, week five or week six, and then most strains are done between eight and 10 weeks. So that only leaves two to four weeks of where the, where the smell is at the maximum, like where you're really gonna smell a garden. And it's really like the last like week or two that is the most hungen. It's not that it's eight to 10 weeks of the same strong, robust smell. So it's like, it's, if, if somebody has an issue with it and there's, it's gonna be really strong in the last two to three weeks of a harvest. And I know people have multiple harvests in a year and depending on your neighbor, that could be a drag. But it's not, I just wanted to clarify the eight to 10 weeks of mature canopy because related to odor. Sorry, I'm more nervous on Zoom for some reason than I am in person, but, um, thank you. I'm, that's it.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, we'll close comments on Zoom and do we have any comments in the room? No? That's amazing.
I'll jump up here first because I want to go home and I'll catch the rest on Zoom and go to, go eat dinner with my family. So, uh, I'm Steve Lyon Junction City. I'm going to talk fast. I've had a variance since early 2017. I think that's one of the very first variances we developed based on that variance. When the language changed, suddenly my garage and processing facility is now outside of the zone. I definitely support staff recommendations. I think this issue has been kicked around for years. I think this is a smart approach. It's not everything that I would want, but I think it's a good compromise. I'm constantly frustrated with how much work goes into this stuff for these compromises. And then once we're at the finish line or just over the finish line, people come back and try to change the compromise that we just worked so darn hard for. You know, the, the entire ordinance in the beginning was a, was a compromise, as John Brower said, a grand compromise. We spent hours in the workshops. One of the main suggestions that came out of the workshops that I heard for buffer zones, which I was paying very close attention to because it affects me very much, was that, uh, the new notifications and that, uh, that was incorporated. That was the main suggestion that I heard. One of the main complaints that I've been hearing about the odor is the mitigation tiers. I think we actually have a smart approach, which is don't make the farmers implement really expensive mitigations to level five until you get a complaint. If you get a complaint, let's try this first thing. Did that work? No. Okay, well, let's try level two. I, I'm sorry, it's not fast enough for some people, but it seems like a fair approach. And again and again, that's what I'm asking for is fairness and consistency. We just did class K housing stuff. If I built something in class K and three years from now, there's a different commission that decides to rescind class K, are we going to tear down these class K buildings? No, we, we let people build them. You built it under the rules at the time. There has to be some consideration for that. Just some quick math, uh, the 350 feet from property lines. If we did that and you had a perfect hundred by hundred section in the very middle of your property, you would need 15 acres. That's 640,000 square feet. The lady who mentioned Eldorado, you would need 66 acres. So what those ordinances have basically eliminated any of the small farmers from participating. Eldorado County, if you need a, uh, what'd she say, a, uh, 800 feet from property lines, it'd be 800 plus 100 square feet, 100 of the garden and 800 on this side, that's 1,700 feet by 1,700 feet. That's 2.9 million square feet. That's a 66 acre parcel. So what Eldorado County has done is eliminate any chance of small farmers from having a, uh, a chance to operate legally. Gosh, I thank you so much. I support staff recommendations. Have a great night. I'll be listening on Zoom.
Thank you for your comments. Have a blessed evening.
Thanks, Chair. Commissioners, Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. I do support the staff recommendations. I think it would be really nice to provide the sort of consistency and stability that Mr. Limes was just talking about. And, and again, I don't believe that we have an historic litany of complaints based on properties with variances from setback. I think there's been a small number of them throughout the entire course of the program. So it appears to be working. In reference to Eldorado, you know, I do a lot of work on, on state government affairs programs. I know more about more jurisdictions programs than I really want to. I believe that Eldorado County, last I heard, had one active cultivation permit with another one in process. So if you would call that a successful program, I would beg to differ. So please, uh, just try and get this done, try and get to the end of this lengthy process that isn't, it's been going on longer than three minutes. It's been going on since 2015, when we developed all of our ordinances over the course of about four years and then went through an EIR process. So the fact of the matter is, there has been an endless, seemingly endless opportunity for public input. And, and as has been mentioned twice, this is the grand compromise. At this point, we have a certified EIR with a statement of overriding consideration that directly connotes to what we're talking about right now. And in fact, I think that we should be trying to quit, put a seal on this. Let's, let's get through this and move on to bigger and better things in the future. And hopefully some more awesome economic development opportunities. And you see the cultivation community was here strong for, for K housing. We've shown up for many, many, many other community-related concerns. So, you know, one, one item, uh, group here because we all live here. It's our community too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keyes. Anybody else?
Chris Williams, Weaverville. So these are thoughts in a particular order, mostly because I'm tired. I support staff, staff recommendation. At the end of the day, we're only talking about less than 200 acres in our county. That's it. The amount of time we spend talking about commercial cannabis, you'd think that cannabis farms were on a million acres. Our current variance system for commercial cannabis farmers doesn't make a lot of sense from the legal definition of the word variance to our topography. We need a better system and this is it. And for once, can we please just champion farmers, small business owners to make life a little bit easier? There needs to be findings of fact for opposition. It has to be rooted in something that cannot be mitigated. A reminder, a 350 foot setback is an arbitrary number, so we could be fighting a 10 foot setback. Uh, as a reminder, where cannabis farms are zoned, uh, they can have goat, sheep, similar livestock, emus, chickens, ducks, pigeons, pheasants, mink, chinchilla, cattle yards, animal sales, fertilizer plants or yards, dairies, agriculture processing plants, all sorts of things that have a smell. And while I'm not positive a doubt, many of these types of parcels or these livelihoods have as many rules as commercial cannabis farmers. I'm going to quote from a recent study on cannabis and nimbyism. Nimbyism is a logic that allows property owners to exclude certain social groups and facilities due to perceived risks and dangers. Nimby attitudes are not based on real people, but rather on assumptions of who they are and the hypothetical fears that they would bring from contaminated places, contaminated places. So now the anti-cannabis effort in our community has found the perfect reason to battle cannabis, odor, because it's super subjective. But it's not really about odor, is it? One individual from Lewiston who's been battling cannabis farms for like the last five billion years recently admitted, saying it's not about the environmental impact report. It's not about sequoia. It's not about any of those things. They just don't like it. And so I've decided I think I should ban every single house. And so I've decided I think I should ban every single house in person in Trinity County because odor is everywhere and sometimes it's offensive, there's this weed, I think it's milkweed, and often it makes me nauseous in the summer, so I've decided I'm gonna battle hours of time coming before you to ban all, whatever weed it is, we're gonna sense it out. I wanna get an olfactory thing so I can find out why it's just so offensive. And for decades, the political establishment and mass media has been linking drug use to moral deprivation, criminal behavior, poverty and disorder. And I think we see that right here, so please, the love of tonight, just pass this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anybody else?
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. I, I support staff's recommendations, which I, I do think is worth pointing out, or essentially this body's recommendations, this is really a synthesis of many of the directions, as I understand it, that have previously been given this and like the three hundred and fifty number, just come up with, I think these reflect many of the things that have been asked for. And not only is this good for the cannabis community to a, a large extent, it is, it's actually very good for staff and for this body. I shudder at the thought of the thousands of hours over the years that have been spent on variances where no one complained about neighbors, but they had to go through this process. And that meant they needed a staff report, and they need to be presented, and they needed your time. So we really, really need to streamline that for everybody's benefit. Where there is legitimate controversy, it is very appropriate to bring that controversy here. And where on like the medium licenses, where it's gonna come here anyway, yes, I think everyone that's been granted and certainly everyone that I'm aware of that's in the process, they all require a variance from that three hundred and fifty, or excuse me, five hundred foot property line setback, but they're coming here anyway. They're getting a staff report anyway. So we're not really saving time. What we're saving is the many, many licenses and license applications that would come here that really don't need your esteemed input. So I, I do encourage adopting this, um, I appreciate the conversation, the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belenko. Anybody else?
Evening again, Commissioners. I also support adopting staff's recommendations or potentially discussing even further into realistic property line setback reductions. Eldorado County was used as one example. Humboldt County, it's based on any standard property line setback that you would use for any other development. You know, thirty feet to the rear, ten feet to the side. That's it, if you can have a hog farm thirty feet from the property line, you can have a cannabis farm thirty feet from the property line on a six hundred and forty acre zoned ag general parcel. The five hundred foot setback to me just seems pretty unique for a large ag zone property, but specifically to the three hundred and fifty foot setback that affects me, I've had a variance since 2016 as well, letter of support from the neighbor. Back then, we're on great terms, same neighbor, that neighbor sells. I would love to have had a buffer reduction setback that then makes all the money I invested after having the ordinance passed be made permanent, so I kind of echo what Steve has said, just if this was anything other than cannabis, I mean, getting the variance every year would just be absurd if you were building a class K house and you were expected to come before the commission and have letters sent to your neighbors every year after you built the house. I mean, it, it just doesn't, uh, make any sense other than to either out of sport or spite, just kind of almost pick on a certain, uh, sect of business, I guess, so short of going into like, um, into a more realistic property line setback, uh, based on uses similar, um, to any other business or ag entity, um, I would, uh, hope that you could pass what staff has recommended, maybe with some of the changes to, uh, ensure that legitimate complaints do come before you guys. I know from my Commissioners' comments, one example of, uh, coming before the commission on a pertinent complaint was they were cultivating illegally and didn't want their neighbors to get a permit, so they didn't have county staff nearby, so their residence was within three hundred and fifty feet, their cannabis, illegal cannabis garden was closer to the property line between their house and the property line, and therefore they didn't want the neighboring parcel to get the permit. So anyway, that was just like one example of why they did come before you and weren't just automatically rejected, I guess, so. Yeah, please, uh, give us some stability and consistency in this, or potentially, you know, consider, you know, realistic property line setbacks, thank you.
Thank you very much, anybody else?
Chair Heaton, Commissioners Lisa Wright-Lewiston. A few different comments. And I want to kind of challenge you to think about what odor really means. So I, I use my Google generative AI, which I love now, these generative AI. And other words or synonym, synonyms for odor include smell, scent, perfume, fragrance, bouquet, essence, redolence, which I don't really know, stink or stench. And so there's a full kind of spectrum of what odor might actually be. Cannabis as a plant, um, actually produces, the scent it produces is from terpenes, which are found in nature, could be found in lavender, pine, lemonade, you know, there's a number of terpenes, and that's what comprises a smell. Unfortunately, to some people, that combination in certain strains, they find objectionable. I think Dana did a great job of the explanation, is there's just really a certain point in the full maturity of the plant and under the definition of mature canopy, when it starts to flower, that's considered mature, even though, you know, it's got a few weeks left before it's actually finished, um, completely flowering. So I kind of challenge you to think about that a little bit more, so for me, the smell of cannabis could be sweet. It is primarily, you know, but there are times when it still is, you know, objectionable. And I think that the EIR did a good job of addressing that, that odor, because of the nature of the plant, is unavoidable and not fully mitigatable, you can't make it go to zero necessarily, it's very difficult, maybe in an indoor highly contained with ionizers and carbon filters and, and that's why it makes good sense to go back to kind of that canopy definition, because the other activities are in buildings where that additional kind of scent, you know, can be restricted more. So it makes sense to kind of go back to, um, that canopy, particularly in, in outdoor settings. Now, we additionally, um, as part of the preparation of the appendix Cs, prepare odor control plans. I think there's one exemption for ag zone parcels, but, uh, we worked with some PhD plant scientists and some of the things we put forth for outdoor, which is the most difficult to provide mitigation for, would potentially be things like they use with sewer treatment facilities, there are actually big atomizer, atomizers that can spray contrasting scents, complementary, that might, uh, negate some of the negative smell that you would assume from cannabis, so yeah, don't think about it as always being bad, you know, odor, it might be fragrant, it might be a fragrance, it might be bouquet. But that it's part of, you know, the industry. I grew up in South Dakota, and did I like to drive by the hog farms? No, but what was the beef of our economy? Those farmers, so please consider that, um, when you're looking at this. I support, run out of time, I talked a lot, I support staff's recommendations and urge you to do the same, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anybody else? There is nobody else. So, but I know it's like we, they couldn't, Duncan couldn't hold out long enough. But anyhow.
I, I, I have a comment.
Oh. Well.
I told him that they were, it was closed.
Okay, yep, nope, uh, discussion is now closed, we're now running to the motion. Uh, sorry about that, but anyhow, do we have a motion on the table?
Well, okay, then I'll let you talk.
So I will, um, I'll make a kind of a lengthy motion. So, um, it starts with, uh, in the staff report, page four. I, uh, make a I move that the planning commission make a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors, A, find that the amendments to chapter seventeen point four three point zero five zero of the Trinity County Code is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act SEQA under the general rule exemption one five zero six one B three, which exempts activities where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment, and B, approve an ordinance to amend TCC section seventeen point four three of the zoning code of the County of Trinity as described in this staff report. And if Commissioners would turn back to page three, I would like to say with the addition of language to seventeen point four three point zero five one A three stating site-specific and cumulative impact shall be considered in determining whether to approve the buffer reduction application. And
Would you repeat that one one more time?
Sure. I, I'll give you, I wrote it down. So the addition of language to seventeen point four three point zero five one A three, where it's talking about will not harm public health, safety or welfare. I want to add site-specific and cumulative impact shall be considered in determining whether to approve the buffer reduction application. And I'll explain that in this discussion. In A four, I would like to insert and consent opposition letter after notice of application. So they would get both a notice of application and a consent opposition letter. I'd like to insert in the next to the last sentence, I'd like to add if a qualified consent opposition letter is received, the Community Development Director will deny the buffer reduction application unless the consent opposition letter is received pursuant to paragraph five below. And those are the adjacent growers and all that, that we don't want to have complaining. And, uh, lastly, changing planning director to community development director. So that is my motion. Do you want me to repeat any of that? Yeah?
Some clarification. Where you inserted, you know, if a if a qualified opposition is received, oh, sorry, it, where you inserted if a qualified opposition is received, I just didn't catch where you wanted to insert that.
So it would be before the if affected property owners disagree with the decision of the director, they may appeal it to the planning commission.
May, may I suggest that you put it before county code section seventeen three two? Because then essentially we're tying together the fact that if the planning director or the community development director as you're, you know, requesting denies the application, then we're referencing the code section where someone can appeal the director's decision. And I, I think that might flow a little better, but it, it's your, it's your motion, so.
So put it but the sentence before county code section seventeen point three two point zero, okay?
Yeah, that'd be my suggestion.
Okay, so now I'm curious if I have a second.
All second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion. What do you, let's discuss.
Well, I just, I just, I did want to do things. So again, there's a lot of language, you know, in the EIR that talks about nature and severity of odor impacts depend on numerous factors, including nature frequency and intensity of the odor sources, wind speed and direction, topographic conditions, proximity to off-site receptors, sensitivity of the exposed receptors. You know, they, they keep talking, talking about, you know, they talk about dispersion modeling indicate that, let's see. Anyway, all the language that Drew provided, you know, where the EIR says that they need to demonstrate that the cannabis site's distance to receptors, wind direction and local topographic conditions will not result in detection of cannabis odors by off-site receptors, I'm just thinking, you know, like where I live, we get a lot of down canyon breezes. And so that particular topography and wind pattern means that, um, maybe the, um, buffer would not be appropriate. But, you know, the reduction in that three hundred and fifty feet, you know, if you're downwind of, of a grow, right? Or, you know, so I'm just saying that, and you know, maybe where you are, one or two grows is fine, but you know, like poker bar, you know, I drive by on two ninety-nine and you can smell in the afternoon, all the down canyon stuff from all the guys up on the hill. And I think that's more a cumulative impact kind of thing, just because there's a bunch of them up there. And so I'm just saying that those should be considered because the EIR does point out that topographic figure features, wind direction and all that really do, do matter. So that's why I added that language. And then the qualified opposition letter, I, I, I do think that, um, people shouldn't have to pay five hundred dollars just to, you know, potentially bring it to the planning commission's attention, that there needs to be some sort of interim step like you suggested with the qualified opposition letter, where if, if someone really legitimately is closer than three hundred and fifty feet and they have concerns, it should come to us for us to consider. You know, it shouldn't be up to the planning, sorry, the community development director to, um, say, no, I don't want to have that go to the planning commission. Which is the way it's currently written. That's my discussion.
Drew? Wouldn't the call, wouldn't a letter that's qualified in effect be that first step that doesn't require any cash outlay from the person that's opposed to it? I mean, that letter is basically saying, hey, I'm in, I'm in this space and, and I really don't want that near me.
But it's not, it's not in the rule that this proposed is written.
It's not, but if that was installed, then that would be that first step.
Yep, that's my, that was my idea.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't want to belabor the discussion unnecessarily, but it's certainly come to my attention that in a few instances, this process can become problematic and, and neighbors can try to extort other neighbors.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, essentially opposing a buffer reduction is that then they're gonna have, you know, the applicant would then have to pay five hundred dollars to appeal the director's decision. So I don't think there's a perfect solution to that, but I, I do just want to at least voice that, that, that I have heard from applicants who were required or were, you know, potentially going to try to get a variance, a CCV, that they were told by their neighbor that they wouldn't oppose their CCV if they gave them half of their crop every year.
Oh, man.
So again, I, I think that where we've landed is a great compromise, but I just want to, you know, make that known, that there is that dynamic that we need to consider, and, and it's, you know, it's a two-way street, you know, people might try to take advantage of each other. Uh, people aren't good neighbors, you know, but generally, I think where we've landed is, is pretty fair.
Um, one of my questions, do we need to specifically call out under, um, the exemptions under C, so right now it, it's currently So right now, it, it's currently discussing new construction, but I'm also just wondering about conversion construction. So if there's an existing structure that's under the three hundred and fifty feet that with our current Class K or any other existing could be converted into an additional dwelling unit or a junior additional dwelling unit if how, how that fits? Because this, as worded stated, new construction. And so if there's additional residences added to a property, that would then require an additional variance that would be under three hundred and fifty feet, do we need to discuss that?
I, I think that's a good point. My, my opinion would be that, you know, at least in the order that, that this is laid out, if the new construction opposed the project, then that would, in essence, prevent those exceptions from being applied because the request for the administrative buffer reduction would be automatically denied in terms of, you know, Carol suggested revisions to this. Are you, do you want to sort of more clearly capture that it's not, you know, do you want to look for some alternative verbiage to, as opposed to new construction? You know, I mean, I think that the way that currently we would consider it would be not construction in process, but a final dwelling would be kind of what would allow for a qualified opposition form. So I, I follow, I think, what you're pointing out, but I'm not exactly sure how we would modify the language to capture.
So how about, you know, so after new construction, if you said, or conversion to residential use, is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah. Protecting the permates from additional dwelling units.
Somebody that takes a shop and converts it into a house. Yeah, so would that, would that, would that language?
Where an existing permit exists.
Yeah. So, so then I, I would propose to amend my motion to say, to also insert after new construction in paragraph five C or conversion to residential use. Do I need to say or conversion of a structure to residential use?
I, I think that residential use is problematic. I think we'd more, you know, because that's one of the other issues that we've
Oh, to a residential structure? Because that's what we're talking about is residential structure.
Permitted residential structure?
That's what it already states, correct. Permitted residential structure.
Or legal residential structure.
It, it says adjacent legal residential structure.
So we could say due to new construction or conversion.
I guess I'm, I'm confused on where you, where you guys are going on that.
So I think it is, so if you have somebody building, building a new legal residential structure, they should know that they're building next to
A cannabis.
Yeah, so they shouldn't be able to complain.
I agree.
So, yeah, so what we're trying to do is, we're also trying to incorporate, besides just building a brand-new legal residential structure, we're looking at conversion of an existing structure.
So if they have
To a residential use. Yeah.
Any structure that's built on a, a neighboring property after the, after the license has been issued, should, it should almost be a reversal on the three hundred and fifty-foot setback. They would be have, they're the ones that would have to, to say, hey, I'm okay with it.
Correct.
So by default, it should be that anyway, I would think. I don't know.
That we've created conflict with the inclusion of the opposition letter automatically disqualifying the director to issue the director's use permit.
I mean, some people might be okay with, you know, being closer than three hundred and fifty feet. So you don't want to require them to be three hundred and fifty feet away. What you want to do is say they can't object to the buffer.
Right, so if there's a shed that's, what I'm discussing is if there's a shed or a barn that's under three hundred and fifty feet and they choose to turn that into a dwelling, that they can't object and that, that it can't cause problems. So I'm just adding that is what I'm asking. But I, at some point, do want more information about the, what Drew was alluding to with the letter and what that means.
So, so the language I had proposed is that, you know, if someone submits a qualification, a consent opposition letter, a qualified consent opposition letter, if they submit a valid consent opposition letter, then the community development director would, would deny that application. And they could still come to us and we might overturn their decision. But initially, the community development director would deny the buffer application, except when one of these three criteria apply. So they would not, the planning director would not automatically deny a buffer reduction application if they got a qualified consent letter, but it was from an adjacent grower or, in this case, someone who is building a brand-new residence or converting an existing structure.
Well, any new structure or converted structure that comes into play after the license has been approved for the, the grown on the adjoining property should not qualify for that.
That's exactly, right.
Absolutely. But I would, I would think that would be, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but as the plan, as the, in the process of them applying for a license to, or a permit to build, that it would be, hey, you know, you're, you're aware this is in that setback, should be, I don't know. But if it has to have verbiage in there to make sure that happens, then absolutely, you should put it in there.
After rereading it, I, I think we're good. And we can certainly have legal counsel weigh in on if we're creating conflict and there may be some, you know, reorganization that happens between the first and second reading of the board, but.
I, I agree. I think we're good because the adjacent legal residential structure due to new construction, that could include conversion, right? You know, so it's a new, a new
It's a new permit.
Yeah, exactly. You've taken an existing structure, you've added new construction to it and converted it, you know, and now it's a adjacent legal residential structure.
Okay. How, looking at it, how do we protect an owner that has a property that they would like to retire on, per se? And so they haven't built their house yet, they would like to build it later, and a grow is going to come adjacent to them and where they would like to build their house, but because they don't currently have a house on their property, they don't quiet, they don't qualify to send an objection letter. How do we protect landowners that have these properties that they seek future development on and don't seek to live next to cannabis?
So they would have to come to the, they would have to appeal and come to the planning commission because the community development director had automatically denied the buffer. They still have the option to come to us and say, you know, I, I oppose this buffer because I've had this property and, and I, you know, this is my dream property to retire to. I mean, they can still come here, the same as the cannabis growers can come here if they don't like what the planning, sorry, the community development director's decision was.
So they will be noticed even though there's not a structure built on the property, that there's a, a grow permit on the adjacent property? Okay? And then, but because there's no residence built to date, it, the buffer will be approved? Why would it be, why would the buffer be denied?
The unfortunate part of that is they don't qualify. And it could be their dream property, but they waited too long. And the other problem is they could also use that and say, well, I plan on building there and because I said so, he can grow and never plan on building there, but they could say that. So that's why the permits have to be in place and the lines have to be drawn at a certain place in it. It doesn't make it perfect. Sometimes you don't get to do what you want to do, even if you're not a packer, you know? It's, it applies to both sides of the coin.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, that's, that's excellently stated there, Dawn. And one of the things that it's like that, I'll, I'll be honest with you, it was like, I've been on the commission for almost four years now. It was like, every time there's a little something, I don't want it to come back to us. And it's like, for every little thing, it was like, I, it's like Drew is perfectly capable of making a good decision. And it was like, I don't want the, I, there's an element for myself, it's like, there's other things out there in Trinity County that need to happen besides just cannabis. And if we can streamline this thing to where it's like, we don't have as much coming before us, I would rather see, it's like, okay, we can come up with something, but it's like, to just say, hey, no, if there's a little element that you disagree with, and I'll be honest with you, there, when Drew telling the story about somebody's like, oh, I won't complain, but I want half of your deal, half of your, your thing, it was like, that is so wrong. There's nothing right about that. It was like, and it was like, you know what? It was like, no, it's like, I think, I think we, if we can streamline this thing to where less stuff comes before us, I think the county would be better off, we'd be better off, and we could accomplish a lot more things besides just squabbles with neighbors. That's first one. And as for odors, I got to tell this story. When, when you talk about the hog farming and all that kind of stuff, it was like, people think I'm nuts, but it was like, every time I drive past a dairy, I absolutely love it. Why? It's like, okay, I'm smelling cow crap. Yes, I know it stinks. But my grandma was surrounded down in Fresno area, just south of Fresno, a little town called Leighton. There was, she had twenty acres of walnuts. There was a twenty-acre parcel next to her, and then there was a dairy. Right across the street from the dairy was another dairy, and just down on the other side was another dairy. And it's like, so you go to my grandmother's house, and it was like, all you had was flies and the smell of cow poo. But every time I drove past that place, I tell you what, it gave me the memory of my grandmother. And it was like, I thought that was the most heavenly smell there ever was. I'm sorry, I'm weird, I know, but I'm just telling you, it's like, yeah, it's like, you can't get away from the smell, but it was like, but, but in reality, it's like, I don't know, I don't have, I don't have the answers to everything, but it was like, but if we can keep it to where, I, I, I would like to see to where less stuff coming to us. And it was like, and Drew's capable of coming up with, was if we come up with some good answers, but to where, oh, but to where Drew, Drew can take care of it, because he's capable, capable fellow. I, I think that if we can get it more dialed in to where it comes less to us, I think we'll be better off.
Ready to vote?
Yeah. What do you guys have anymore?
I have one more question for Carol. The very first thing that you said I missed, and I think it was supposed to go on.
Number three.
Page three, number three?
Yes.
Not, I did not get that clear.
So I wanted to, I was proposing to add, site-specific and cumulative impacts shall be considered in determining whether to approve the buffer reduction application. And again, that's, that's recognizing some of the language in the EIR that says topography, wind direction, all those things affect odor. And so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that the planning director, sorry, community development director, is, is looking at site-specific and cumulative impacts when determining whether or not to approve the reduced buffer.
Will we need to have a criteria developed to determine based off of those?
I think that's in the EIR.
Okay. So whether he would approve or deny a buffer based on cumulative impacts is defined in the EIR.
I mean, they talk about the number of rows affecting, sorry, odor, let's see. You know, they're talking about odors can be perceived, considered objectionable depending on the size and type, outdoor mixed light, indoor of cultivation operations, nearby receptors, the strain of cannabis being cultivated, the presence of nearby vegetation and topographic and atmospheric conditions. They're talking about the number of them. So I think that, you know, you're going, we don't have a checklist for this, but I just think we've had people come in and say, okay, in my particular geographic area, you know, this is what I see is, you know, the downdraft winds because I'm in a canyon. And so they should be able to present that information because the, the EIR is for the county, just very generally, you know, it, it doesn't really kind of delve into the site specifics. And so I think we should give the people who are submitting a qualified consent opposition letter or whoever, the ability to say, here's my specific issues. And so that's why I object to the buffer being reduced.
Can I make comment? Okay, so, oh, can I make comments, sir? The, the buffer, a reduction on a buffer, again, if the neighboring property has a qualified letter, it means that they have basically a residential structure that's legal within three hundred and fifty feet. So that is the only qualifying letter that what you're talking about is outside the preview of a buffer period. It's, and it's also subjective to numbers, which would have to be, in my opinion, they would have to be created on a area-specific basis, and it would be on concentration, and that's a whole different subject. You'd have to go, well, when there is five hundred acres of mature canopy in this area, that's, that's as much as we'll allow. Five hundred one, no, can't be done. That's the cutoff. Sorry, you can't plant here anymore. That's a different kind of, it's a whole different subject and as far as I can see and, and so subjective, it just invites people to never stop saying, I'm not happy, and never letting that person go forward, even though they've met all the other criteria. Unfortunately, it, it could be annoying to somebody, and that is unfortunate for
I mean, we've had, we've had license applications come before us with a bunch of neighbors saying, these are my concerns. And we haven't really, I think, given people the opportunity very much to say, here's the site-specific conditions that, for my neighborhood or wherever, and here's the other dozen, you know, grows that, you know, are, you know, making it the odor. And it's not just the odor, it can be, this is commercial cannabis cultivation. So we're talking about, you know, delivery trucks, you know, we've had people, you know, express concern about all the delivery of supplies and, you know, all that stuff. We've had people talk about noise, you know, people talk about light. And I'm just saying, I think people need to be able to say, there's another reason why you shouldn't issue this buffer reduction due to these particular site-specific cumulative impacts. Because the EIR is just this general document at this, you know, fifty thousand foot level for the county.
So maybe I'm not understanding correctly. I thought that the buffer reduction only could, my understanding is a buffer reduction happens only if the neighbors are okay with it. happens only if the neighbors are okay with it.
Right, it sounds like, Carol, more of what you're asking for is a, a larger way to object a cannabis license going through, but that it's.
Not a license, not a license, but the buffer reduction.
But it's, it seems like it's getting nested under this buffer reduction and that it doesn't, and that it shouldn't be. Because if, if you have a group of neighbors saying that, and to what Commissioner Ellis was saying, that it's more of a question of density with then you're having the compounding issues and the cumulative impacts of the odors causing a homeowner to be distressed. It could be a homeowner that's not even within the 350 foot buffer. That's frustrated about it. But that shouldn't apply to a buffer reduction, because the buffer reduction is only relative to if their residential structure is within 350 feet of a residence. I think what you're asking for opens a different line.
It would also address the concern, like, okay, my house is over here, but all my other structures, my barn, my shed, my garden are on this side of my house. I mean, as the only place where you can be affected by the odors, the noise, the light, the dust, is the only place that you can be affected by those in your house, sitting in your house. So this gives people the ability to also say, you know, there's, it, it affects me when I'm working in my barn or my shed or my garden, or my kids are outside playing or anything like that. So it's, it's multipurpose.
Well, then I think we would have to change the language and, and it's no longer a residential structure and it's just a setback from a parcel line or something like that. Because if, if that's, if you want them to consider everything on the parcel, the, the gardens, the play, the play places for the kids, the sheds, things, it's not, it's not a buffer from a residential structure. It's a buffer from the neighboring parcel.
Well, I, I don't want to go there. I don't want to have the staff have to look at everything that goes on a adjacent parcel. I'm just saying, someone should have the ability to present information that is site-specific or cumulative impacts that says, this is why I should, that you should not issue the buffer reduction.
But not what the appeals process is after that. And yes, they do have to pay when they go to that step, but then they're going outside the bounds of the buffer reduction, because that's, again, it's another subject, but that's, that's the tool for you to come as a community and say, hey, this is too much.
Well, I, I don't want to keep repeating myself. If you want to vote against my motion, you know, please do. But, you know, that's, that's why I'm saying that in the past, based on our experience with people coming before us saying, there's this general criteria and it doesn't allow for, you know, more immediate neighbors to request that other things be considered that aren't at the 50,000 foot level in whether or not a variance has been issued or something. I'm just saying, I'm trying to give people the ability to say there's, you know, there's specific conditions, site-specific and cumulative, that affect whether or not that should be approved.
Is, is there anything preventing them from expressing those concerns during our public comments here or to the director directly? It's just, it's just that potentially no action would come of it?
Yeah, I mean, past experience has been whenever someone tries to say, you should be considering site-specific or cumulative impacts, they've gotten slammed down, right?
Well, I can.
We've been told, no, you have to go by the EIR, even though the EIR talks about these specific things like wind direction, topography, the type of strain of plants. I mean, those get talked about in the EIR and they never get presented to us as something we should consider. Right? You guys remember, I mean, have we been able to do site-specific or cumulative impacts successfully? No?
I will. I don't think that, like it has been said, I don't think that we're, you're gonna find something that is gonna be an absolutely perfect piece of the puzzle that'll fix everything. That is like, that's just, I have four children at my house. Those are two right there. And again, I tell you something, just going to town and trying to figure out where we're gonna eat sometimes, it'll go and it's like, and then all of a sudden dad makes an executive decision, it's like, no, we're eating here today. And it was like, so you're not gonna get everybody happy and everything. I remember one time that we had before us where a person, a person was complaining and said, this grow is stinking up my house. And he was applying for the permit and he didn't even have a plant in the ground. And it was like, and we have, and it was like, my lord, it was like, how are we gonna, it was like, how do you fix that? When it was like, he don't even have a plant in the ground. And it was like, and his grow is stinking up her place. And it was like, I, I don't know. It's like, I think that, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying, but I don't, I personally think that it was like, if we stick with what we have there, I don't think there's a point really in reinventing the will. I think that's gonna add a whole lot of extra time and stuff like that, where it's like, if we, it was like, if they have the house within the 50. I, I understand that it was like, okay, my garden is here on the fence and theirs is over here. And my house is the 350 feet or whatever. And it was like, and yes, the garden, the garden is gonna get some smell. I get that. But at the same time though, how it states is like.
So, so you have this really general thing. So the buffer reductions, the criteria that the community development director is looking at, it's really vague. It says that the buffer reduction will not result in harm to the public health, safety or welfare and nearby land uses. So you already have this really vague thing. And I'm trying to add some criteria in response to the dilemmas we have faced, where people come in and talk about site-specific or cumulative impacts. You know, the comment letter that we got, you know, the board of supervisors, you know, passed this thing where cannabis cultivation in Trinity County will take place without detriment to neighbors or communities. So, so saying that you should at least consider site-specific and cumulative impacts, to me, just helps clarify how you review this condition, which the planning director, sorry, community development director is supposed to be looking at. You're supposed to be looking at will not result, result to harm, in harm to the public health, safety or welfare and nearby land uses. Well, how does he determine that? Right?
What are, what are his tools?
Yeah. And what's he looking at? I'm thinking they should be able to consider an applicant saying, or, you know, somebody that's maybe the next house down saying, there's already nine grows, maybe not added ten. It, it doesn't mean that he has to deny it. It just means that he should, it's, consider it.
But I think what you're asking for too is for, even though it's not been said yet, is that it's not just for licenses that need the 300 foot buffer variation either, that, that if you're gonna say that with the cumulative and site-specific impacts, that's gonna be broader than just the 300 foot reduction barrier. And I think it gets back to, to Commissioner Ellis's point of density.
Well, I think all along, they should be, should be considering site-specific and cumulative impacts because of the way the EIR is countywide. And I'm just, I'm just trying to start kind of helping, you know, this, that be considered.
So would that be, would it not be something that we could address separate from this? Because this is about reduction, or this is about the buffer reduction and the canopy cultivation, the canopy and those specifics. What you're talking about, I agree, because it's applied to every, every industry. But there is no standard for it. So how do you come up that standard? And it has to be something that can be applied to it, but it has to be area, not site-specific. Site, I'm area-specific being this canyon or this area that's affected by this downdraft or whatever. And because that becomes a site, that's not site-specific, but it's cumulative if multiple grows go in. Because site, site-specific, you're never gonna get that. You're not gonna get the concentration necessarily. You're gonna get the occasional concentration. I understand that. And, and really what's, what this, this subject is, it's kind of, it, it's difficult because it kind of has to be looked at like Trinity County did say yes to cultivation. And so this is one of the parts of, this is a component of cultivation. And Trinity County has accepted, has, has said yes to it. So it does have an effect and it can't be completely overridden. It only can be semi-directed and hopefully, because I, I wouldn't necessarily want to be in a place with concentration of, of odors from grows either. And if it changed my lifestyle that I had before, I would be upset if that was the case.
So I'll, I usually don't use stories, but I'll take Todd's approach. One of the reasons I'm bringing this up is there was an illegal grow on Rancheria Creek, which is now, you know, claiming to be a grandfathered grow. That's still, you know, up for discussion. If that grandfathered grow goes in, in the same place as where this previously unlicensed grow was, it's just right uphill from that big KOA campground. The KOA campground, every night got complaints about the downdraft and the odors. Campers were out, they want to be out camping, you know, enjoying the wilds, you know, out on the lake. They just didn't want to have that issue. And so, you know, that's the kind of thing where I think that they should be able to, to say, this is affecting my business. People are leaving, right? And so that's, but, but, you know, theoretically, because they're not a 350 foot, 300, 350 feet from a house, they can't say you should waive the, shouldn't waive the 350 foot setback.
I, I think, I, I, Carol, I agree with you. I, I agree with you. But I also know this, because it's like, there are some people at home in, in Ruth. They got, they end up getting burned out and actually now they've moved up to Oregon. And there was a lady that went to the church there and, and honestly, it was like, they had a place out there in Ruth. And then they had a, they would live with their, one of their children in town. Right up where they lived, it was like, they had one family that grew and then one of his family members grew. And then some other families grew. And it was like, and it got to the spot where at a certain time of year, they would move to town because he couldn't handle it. I get what you're saying, but I also know though, that no matter, we're never gonna get 100% agreement and make everybody happy.
Like I said, the, the way it's written, it's just saying that site-specific and cumulative impacts should, shall be considered. The community development director may say, you know, you're just blowing smoke. I mean, you're just, you know, not reasonable. That's not a reasonable argument. I'm still gonna, you know, if, approve the buffer reduction. That's, that's where it is.
Drew, I have a question. I don't know if we can answer this, but do we have an idea of what the density is today of legal grows compared to the heyday of unlicensed cultivation prior to licensing was approved?
I mean, let's say, density is specific to a specific geographic region. But if what you're talking about is Trinity County as a whole, my understanding is that the numbers that were identified previously were, and I'm getting pretty tired, but I want to say it was five, 5,000 cultivation sites within the county. It was three to five or five to six, something like that, five to six, Ed Zane. So I would say we have 10% of what we had historically, because, you know, we have a maximum of 530 licenses available.
Thank you.
If I may, while I, I totally agree with you, Carol, and I'm not opposed to this being included here. I just want to point out, and maybe this'll, you know, kind of help give some guidance to you commissioners in terms of, you know, what decision you're gonna make. Site-specific and cumulative impacts shall be considered. I don't think that specific environmental evaluations are appropriate. The buffer reduction process is not the appropriate part of our overall licensure process to do these types of very specific and detailed analyses. That would be in the environmental review and the appendix C document. So I just want to point that out, you know, that.
Then, then why does it, then why is one of the criteria that it would not result in harm to the public health, safety or welfare and nearby land uses?
Well, I mean, again, if what you're referring to i- is harm based in, in odor, then, then that is a whole separate issue that we undoubtedly will continue to grapple with as it relates to, you know, ordinance revisions. Because they're subjective. And, you know, as Lori Wills stated in her public comment, there are, you know, there is the olfactometer, probably as the, the one tool that I'm aware of to quantify subjective odor concerns. So I think that we, based on, you know, discussion we had in ad hoc today, I think like we'll land on utilizing that piece of technology to, to do our best to quantify these subjective concerns. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to it being there, but I think that like, just to clarify that those types of evaluations would be done in the environmental document, not as a part of evaluating for the buffer reduction. I would think that, you know, for a reasonable administrative process to occur, that the director, community development director in this case, would rely on the evaluations done within the environmental document. And I don't think that it, I don't think it would be administratively efficient to perform a second set of evaluations for these buffer reductions. And, you know, the, I think the, the specific instances that you're referencing are from people that live outside of, you know, in terms of the appeals that we've heard, these are from people that live outside of the 350 foot setback requirement. If they live within the 350 foot setback requirement, that license would have never been granted. So I, I hope that that helps to give you all a little bit more information.
That, that also goes back to where I remember a story where, a, a instance where we voted here, where it's like, there was an individual who had his license and then it was like, somebody built their house. And then it was like, and then other people moved in the community and built their house and they were complaining about the individual. And then, yeah, and granted, I, I understand that that's, we're kind of, I hope we're getting past that stage. If you grow, if you build your house where there's already existing grows, like. If you grow, if you build your house where there's already existing grow, it's like, you should already be aware that that's there. But it's like, but then they come, then they have the complaint and it was like, and they're not even in the 350-foot setback. And it was like, we denied it. We're like, no, it's like, you really don't have any, uh, and it was like, and even one of the houses was like, just a number of feet outside the 350 feet. But then the people within the 350 feet said, "No, we don't mind." It's like, we like, it's the smell of money to us, the one lady said. And so, I don't know. But anyhow, it's like, that was, that was just a thought that crosses my mind as well. And...
As I'm learning about this, and I know that I have a lot to learn, something that I would like to know more about for the cumulative impacts and stuff is how, or what policies, ordinances are in place for landowners that would have issue with a neighbor with cigarette smoke coming down, downdrafts, updrafts, and you know, what does that look like? Are, are there any options for a landowner that's having that issue? It's a similar noxious smell, they could say it's decreasing their quality of life. And so what, what options are currently available for that nuisance? I'm just kind of thinking about that.
I don't think you're gonna get accumulation of 500 people or whatever at one time, sitting around smoking a cigarette at one place when, I, I could be wrong on that. And it was like, and so I don't think that we're gonna run into that issue. And it was like, it's, that's kind of, I don't know, unless there's a smokers' club going on or whatever. And but, but for the sake of, I don't, I don't fully know, but I don't think we're really gonna get that, that sort of thing, but it was like...
I'm, I was just thinking for, cause that's
Correct.
An odor concern, right, for some people? And so what do we currently have in policy anywhere in the county that references that? And is there anything?
There's a 20-foot setback from any opening on a commercial building for cigarettes, that's about the only one I know.
If it's addressed in the SECA document, is that correct?
Yeah, I think.
And the thing that's missing is what, what qualifies as cumulative and how to measure it. Is that something that we would address in a different meeting and not with this complete, in this? Or is it best in, I just don't see, I don't, I don't see it in here being affected. I see it being affected outside of here, the buffer reduction. I just don't, I don't know how to address, I don't know how to address that one.
Same here.
I would make a motion to make a amendment to the...
You're doing a subsequent motion.
I don't, I don't need to do a subsequent, cause I just wanna amend yours. I just wanna take out that one section. Do I need to do a whole subsequent? I thought you can do an amendment to...
You would need to make a subsequent motion. Because I wouldn't agree to take it out. So just start over. Go for it.
It's too long.
But for simplicity's sake, you could, I think, make a subsequent motion to, you know, basically utilize Carol's motion with the exclusion of some particular element.
Okay. I'm gonna borrow my... Yeah, can I borrow that? I will make a subsequent, I move to, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, I move to make a recommendation that the board of supervisors find the amendments to chapter 17.43.050 of the Trinity County Code is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act under the general rule exemption of 15061B3, which exempts activities where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment. And B, to approve an ordinance to amend TCC section 17.43 of the zoning code of the county of Trinity as described in the staff report, in which, and on page three, we look at inserting "And consent opposition letter after the notice of application in a four", and that we look at inserting, or sorry, and that we insert, "If a qualified consent opposition letter is received, the community development director will deny the buffer reduction application unless the consent opposition letter is received pursuant, sorry, pursuant, I can't speak anymore."
Pursuant.
Thank you, pursuant, to paragraph five below. And adding the additional language change from above to, of planning director to community development director. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And shall we do a roll call? Ms. Debbie?
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote on this subsequent motion?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleets?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Fall?
Oh, regretfully, aye.
And Chair Hayden?
I tried.
Motion pass for zero.
Okay. Don't lead now.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any planning commissioner reports? I, actually, I'll, I'll share a couple little things. For one, it's, it's an honor to be the chair. I really didn't want it, but yeah, it's an honor to be the chair and it's just gonna help me grow. But, but also I wanted to say that it was like, we haven't, we've talked about like the, the limited-density dwelling residences and stuff like that. I've been actually talking with some individuals and I have some people who are lined up, who are, I think, getting ready to pull the trigger on getting some of those. So it's like, so I wanna encourage you, it's like, there are people out there who are looking at it and they've been asking questions and stuff of that nature. And so I wanted to tell you that it's like, this isn't just wasting our time. It was like, there are people who are truly interested in it, even though they have not stepped forward yet to, to pull the trigger on saying, yep, I'm ready to do it. But it was like, but they're definitely in the motion, thinking and drawing up plans and stuff of that nature. And the other thing I wanted to say is, it's a, it's a privilege to have Ms. Fleets on board. And it's like, you're doing a marvelous job. And it's like, welcome. Anybody else?
Ditto, welcome, Amelia.
Commissioner Fleets, thank you for the welcomes. And I've got a lot to learn and I look forward to it.
Mr. Don, did you have anything?
Nope, just glad you're here. I like your thoroughness, thank you.
Yep, yep. Well, do we have a director's report? All right. Yes.
We need to change that to community development director's report, I need to retrain my brain.
So actually, for the record, I'm actually dual-headed. I am technically the planning director and the deputy director of community development services. When Veronica brought that up in her public comment, I texted Trent and said, "Hey, I need to add this formally so that there's no other confusion." And he said, "Yes, just add it to your, to your signature block tomorrow." So that will be on my signature block. And I really apologize that it's not on there now. But we didn't really know how things were gonna go. We got Bella over now as a senior planner, so things are actually starting to make some good traction now. So we're really pleased about that. I have two things specifically, and we'll talk about Commissioner Fleets in a second. Architectural review committee, the previous appointee was for District Two, Commissioner Sharp. Do we want to, do we want to push that on to the new person? Because she wasn't here and we're making a decision to... You're good, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's...
I will accept the appointment.
Everybody's good on that. I don't have to do it. And the other one is for the subdivision review committee. So that's another one that's a little bit, it can be a little bit more knowledge-based, we'll say. So I just wanna make sure, because Commissioner Sharp was on that District Two, is it okay for Commissioner Fleets to be put into that role? Or do you want to appoint someone different?
I, I was thinking Todd, because we're looking for someone with construction experience, right? I don't know. But then that's a lot of traveling.
How often does that, how often does that meet? So currently, it's as needed. As needed? Yes, sir. So we were planning on, as soon as the new commissioner was appointed to the group, then we were gonna have another meeting, just so that we can kinda get to know everything that's going on and everything, because Bella's not here. But she did tell me that there's four subdivision review maps that are, basically, they're, they're waiting and they need that. So if you'd like to do that, that would be fine. Well, you have to be appointed, but... Are you gonna appoint yourself? Can he appoint himself? I guess she had nominated, I guess you could, but...
So...
Sorry, this is, this is Margaret Long, and yes, he can appoint himself.
I guess I could probably do that. So that's a definite maybe, okay? Yeah, definite maybe, uh, yeah. Okay, thanks, sir.
If you don't like it, you can always pick on someone else.
Okay, so one thing I need to remind commissioners of, all the training and everything that Debbie set out, please read through it. We, me and Amelia, me and Commissioner Fleets, we did attend that training last week for planning for non-planners. I found it highly illuminating. I actually requested two of the videos. I think the one on the general plan and the one on zoning, absolutely beneficial. So many notes I would have taken, I ran out of hand strength. It was just like, almost everything that the woman said in them, I just wanted to take notes on it because it was just such good information. But I do have kind of an overview of it, it's 28 pages. I don't know if you downloaded it, you probably did, as thorough as you are. But I think that would be decent for all, I know you've, you've already seen it as well. But if, if you haven't, or if you haven't, Don, I mean, it's some really good information. Just, it, it gets into a little bit of specifics, but it's mostly from a broad view of these are the kind of things that are going on and what to look for. Okay. You know, I'm, I'm not too bright, but you know, I could understand most of it, so it was good. So the last thing I wanted to point out, because I've known Commissioner Fleets for a number of years, but I also, so I wanted to reach out to you specifically for this, but I kinda noticed that I haven't actually put this out to everyone else. If at any point you think you need to drop by and maybe get some behind-the-scenes training of what building department does, ask some questions one-on-one. Community development department, it's really all about you guys. If you wanna show up on any given day and just have a thorough tour, ask questions, meet with any of the division people, we have a lot of people that do a lot of good things. So I would just ask that you let me know ahead of time, so I could make sure people are there, cause a lot of them spend time out in the field. But I was thinking about that when, when you were talking earlier and I'm like, this is probably something that would be very beneficial for all of you, if you wanted to. So I wanted to put, point that out there. Just email me if you're interested. The last thing is, and this is just part of the training thing, remember that it takes three commissioners to actually direct staff to say, "Hey, we need you to go do this, we need you to go do this, we can do that." But it actually needs to be a decision of the commission, you know, so don't task my people too overly, I guess is what I'm saying. Because with all your questions, I, I think there was a lot of people online and in the audience that are gonna be very impressed with how you present. So I just really appreciate you being here. And that's it, that's all I have. If that's it, how about we join the meeting at 10:36?